I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good evening, good afternoon, everybody, and it's great to see you all. I hope everyone had a nice, blessed, and safe holiday. And, uh, and, uh, good to see, good to see you all. Thank you to all of our board members and staff for joining us tonight. And to everyone out in the community who is joining us via Zoom as well. We're glad to have you with us tonight as we share a lot of information tonight. Um, so, um, we will go ahead. But before we get started, I do, um, and before we read our board norms, I would ask if you would join me in a, a brief moment of silence just to honor and respect, staff and students who we have lost recently, um, for various reasons. And for our community who continues to be facing challenges, uh, COVID-related and not COVID-related. Um, our community has lost some folks, and so we want to respect and honor those that we have lost. So if you wouldn't mind joining me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. And Ms. Page, you and your family are continued to be in our prayers and thoughts. So, um, we will, we will keep you all in our prayers. So, um, as we do at the beginning of every board meeting, I'm going to read our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. With that, I would ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Casey, present.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, with that, I would take a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda.
Oh, moved.
Moved and seconded. Uh, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Um, so now we are on to one of my favorite parts of any of our agendas. Uh, Dr. Miguel, want to go ahead and kick us off? Uh-oh, you're muted there, Dr. Miguel, sorry.
Someday we'll get it right. So let me share, um, with you. The first item is the employee of the month, so I would like to invite, um, Ms. Jody Mitchell to share with us.
Well, good evening, board. I'm here to talk about the December Employee of the Month, and actually, this month, we have employees of the month. We have several. Um, and the nomination came from, um, Ms. Lenora Miller and Dr. Bob Wilcox from JFK. And as, I'm just gonna read a little excerpt. I'm not gonna read the entire nomination, but we have, um, the nomination for several guests. They call them guests, working, uh, helping out during the phase of the reentry plan at JFK. Um, four individuals helping there from the Transportation Department, David Banks, who is a bus driver, Tina Lee, who is a bus aide, Christopher Ledoux, also a bus aide, and Deborah Quezenberry, a bus aide. So they have been helping, um, from the Transportation Department for several months in the time of, um, since we don't have buses running, but, um, they say that it's been refreshing to walk into the office in the morning and through our hallways as we are greeted by their smiles and their hellos. It goes without saying that being taken out of your normal routine or regular job duties could be frustrating or uncomfortable for anyone. But it's apparent that these guests at their building, um, have embraced the change in job position and, uh, made, um, some great improvements, not only through their, um, kindness and, uh, opportunity, but also getting work done. So we congratulate those four people from Transportation for our December Employees of the Month.
And I would like to add, um, these are four, uh, Transportation employees that we're highlighting today. But, um, I am hearing from several departments that our Transportation staff that is helping i- in different departments, they are outstanding. Everybody loves having them. Um, so, um, Mr. Martin, you have done something well, and Ms. Miller, great staff. Thank you so much. And the next one is Student of the Month.
Uh, good evening, Board President Lopez, Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Miguel. It's always a pleasure, uh, to do Student of the Month, and it's even more of a pleasure because I get to do it twice this month. So first meeting and the second, since we had a short month in November. But the first student who I would like to recognize, and bear with me, what does the Board President Lopez like to say? Give me grace, because I am not great on the, what is it, on the Zoom yet, but I will get there one day. Um, our first student that we're going to honor is from Emerson Elementary. And I know this looks a little different, but we wanted to make the pictures to where you could actually see our students. You know, in the time of COVID, it is much more difficult to find students and get pictures. But our Student of the Month for November is Michael Yang. And he was nominated because he always answers questions. He attends school every day. And he has a great stu- he has a great smile. And although he doesn't have it in that picture, you can tell he's a happy young man, and I love the suit as well. So we'd like to congratulate him. He's from Emerson Elementary, although he's in pre-K. And congratulations to him and his family on this nomination and their award this month. So all the pictures will look somewhat like that, just because we wanted to make them visible. Our next Student of the Month is, oh, let me get him up here. Give me one second. You bring him up, and then you pull the wrong thing. It is Gael Rodriguez Padilla. And as you see, he's got a great smile as well. Um, I remember, I remember when my smile used to be that big, so I gotta work on that, but he has a great smile. His phone, his, actually, his iPad didn't work in class, and he pulled out his, he pulled out a phone. I don't know if that was his phone or a parent's phone, but he made sure that he continued to learn. And he's always there to get the job done. The other thing is Gael is deaf. And we have an interpreter that's on with us this evening. And that is Ms. Emily Moore. And you guys saw Emily. She's over there in the corner. Um, so she's, she's over there interpreting. Unfortunately, we all can't see her at this point. But as we know, Gael Rodriguez Padilla is a second grader at JFK Elementary. Had to do that because we wanted to try to get his whole picture in, and I like his astronaut shirt, so I had to show that as well. So congratulations to him and his family. Our next student is from Gloria Willis. And it was Emmy Pearson for the first school, so I apologize. I, I will own my mistake here publicly, so, uh, thank you for pointing that out, those that have helped me out. And we definitely want to ensure that our students do get their, their moment in the sun. And we also want those principals to be happy because when they have a student that's up here getting honored, we want that to happen. The next student that we're honoring is Christian Perez. And I will scroll so we can see him better. The computer will let me. He's at Gloria Willis. And he was nominated because he helped out his teacher, he helped out his classmates with Naviance, which we know is our college and career pathway when they're looking at what they want to do. And when the teacher couldn't get it to work, he was able to get the program to work. So he was able to help out the teacher, and he was also able to help out other students. So thank you very much for that work. We appreciate you helping out your peers. And thanks for doing so.
Can you scroll down a little bit? I only see half of his face, or maybe it's-
There we go.
No, there he is. Thank you.
Christian Perez, eighth grader. Hey, like I said, I'm trying to, I'm trying to scroll, and, and, and the scroll is not my friend tonight. But we're happy to get Christian in there, and congratulations to him on this award. And congratulations to Gloria Willis. Our last student. And let me bring them up. Oh, come on up here now. Our last student is from JC Harmon High School. And her name is Michaela Bell. We'll work on, we'll work on this one as well. See if we can-
We can see.
Michaela Bell is a 12th grader at JC Harmon. She's overcome numerous health issues to attend school. She was, uh, actually nominated by Coach Davies in a very emotional letter, talking about what she's done to be at school. And she's dedicated to learning. And although she doesn't in this picture, she always has a smile on her face during class and makes JC Harmon, makes the Zoom a better place to be. So congratulations to Michaela Bell and her family, and also to JC Harmon High School. And-
If you wouldn't mind scrolling up a little bit on her, because I only see the bottom half of her face. Sorry, Ms. Linkus. Or zoom out, maybe we can catch it. Sorry.
Oh, Stephen, at the bottom, at the bottom to the right, you can control the size of the picture. Keep going down. There you go. Nope, down to the bottom. There we go. In our efforts-
Um, we are going to have the letters on the website, right?
Yes. They'll be on the website. The students will receive their awards as they always do. As you know, in the time of COVID, it's a little different. We usually would have them come up and take pics. But we will still honor them and the families. And, uh, just thank you guys for this opportunity to honor our students. This is always a lot of fun. And, uh, I look forward to the 15th. That's getting to honor four more, and, and next time, we'll have a little more practice with the pictures, and get them zoomed in on the first one. So thank you, guys, for your grace, and thank you to our students and families, and especially to our teachers for nominating.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus, and we want to encourage everyone to go to our website and read about the accomplishments of these students. We are very proud of them. We thank their principals and teachers for nominating them. And thank you again for nominating the employees. We wish we could highlight more. This is what we, we really like to do, celebrate the good work of our employees and our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for sharing, and for, um, for all of our students, congratulations, and our staff, congratulations as well. Um, so we will move on with our agenda to our community comment section. Ms. Smith?
Okay, our first comment is Frank Rushton, PTA. Thank you. On behalf of the Frank Rushton PTA and its members, we want to publicly and formally share our appreciation for Frank Rushton Elementary Principal, Dr. Tamika McCauley. Frank Rushton families are so thankful for her leadership and commitment to our students, the staff, and their families. Our school-family partnership works because she is a good communicator. She's humble, honest, and transparent. And she is 100% supportive of each and every student's success. Thank you, Dr. McCauley, and staff for all that you do for the Jaguar family and community. Frank Rushton, PTA, Executive Committee and Members.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second comment is from Rachel Russell. Hazard pay, reentry, and recognition. Good evening, board and USD 500 staff. Above and beyond pay. This item has been placed on the board agenda and table on many occasions. As a community member, I've been very interested in the rollout of these dollars because I strongly believe that anyone in harm's way during the pandemic should be compensated in addition to their current rate of pay. During last month's meeting, this item had come back to light based on employee disagreement and frustration with the way the process is being handled. I do believe any individual that had to come into contact with any other staff and or community member should receive hazard pay. As long as the option to work from home is available to most, others are risking their health and well-being to keep our schools open, running, and clean. These behind-the-scenes superheroes should not have to argue or dispute with HR regarding this pay. It has been said before that we have updated our tracking systems in HR, so why do these folks have to report hours to HR for hours' work? HR should already know that. If not, HR should be required, should be required to handle that administrative task, not the employee. Please figure this out and give our superheroes the above and beyond pay that they deserve because those individuals are doing exactly that, going above and beyond for our community and our kids during this pandemic school year. Reentry. Communication continues to be a low point for parents and family during this remote learning experience. School buil- school buildings don't have the information to provide to parents to answer their questions, and things continually change on a day-to-day basis. The reentry tab on the district website is outdated, lacks relevant information, and the responses to most of the FAQ, frequently asked questions, are very vague and no longer relevant. Parents were asked to make decisions on their, on their child's second semester, which was said to be their determination for the rest of the school year. However, the one place that, however, the one place the information is available 24/7 is outdated, not concise, and involves too many clicks. While things change, that's understandable during this time. It is very important for parents to have access to accurate and concise information. Please consider adopting a friendly document and/or webpage similar to Piper's Return to Learning Plan or Park Hill's Pandemic Plan. I found these documents extremely helpful, easy to read, and provide the information I'm looking for for, from USD 500 in one place. Lastly, I want to encourage the district to develop a way for parents and guardians to recognize students, staff, and other parents for their hard work during this remote learning hybrid experience. While I understand that the district has a formal process for student and employee of the month, I would also like to see a platform for parents and community, for parents and community that can nominate individuals, and those are shared in some way on the district's website, social media, et cetera. This may be possible with the current process, but I'm just not sure how that work, how that process works. And if those that are nominated are even recognized, if not selected. So with that being said, I would like to end with just that. A quick recognition of my youngest daughter's second and third grade teacher, Ms. Sydney Newland at Frank Rushton Elementary. I shared my thanks to her in an online video last school year, but I am continually thankful for her and her impact on my daughter's education experience. Ms. Newland is the definition of a grade A teacher. She builds genuine relationships with her students and their families. She's, she makes learning fun and unique. And most of all, she is involved with her students in their after-school activities. My daughter is a better person, friend, and student because of her. Thank you, Ms. Newland.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and, um, I want to personally thank the Jaguar family for, um, the kind words about Dr. McCauley and Ms. Russell, um, to reassure you that I'm taking notes, and I, and, and of course, we have the letter um, of all of the, um, suggestions that you've had, so we will look at all of that. Thank you so much for the suggestions, for the feedback on the website, and, uh, for the, the nice words about Ms. Newland. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for pointing that out. Uh, so yes, Ms. Russell, thank you. And again, um, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for reading those. Um, and for those that are watching, um, anyone is welcome to give a community comment. Um, please just contact Ms. Smith, um, no later than, uh, 12 o'clock noon on the Monday before our board meeting. And you can submit a community comment via, um, written email or call her, uh, on the phone, and she can walk you through the process as well. So thank you for that. Uh, we always love hearing from our community members, um, whenever they have an opportunity to share. Okay, so with that, Dr. Miguel, uh, we'll move on to you. Thank you. Good to see you again tonight, and, uh, hope you had a blessed Thanksgiving with your family as well.
I did. Small celebration, but it was good. I'm happy to be healthy. Thank you so much. The same to all of you. Um, I have lots of news to share. Um, the, the first one is actually above and beyond bonus, so we wanted to give everyone an update on where we are with the above and beyond bonus, um, as of today, and you will see, um, the update in the HR report also, but as of today, a total of 654 employees have received payment for the above and beyond bonus for a total of, um, almost $560, uh, and $70,000. An additional 61 staff members will be on the December 1st agenda tonight for a total of uh, almost, um, $70,000 for today's update. So, uh, over $600,000 in, uh, above and beyond bonus, a total of employees of 715. Um, and then we are still considering the appeals. There are people who have been asked to provide more information, and we will consider every single piece of information that they provide, so, um, HR continues to work on this. So trust us that, um, we continue to review the requests. Thank you for the feedback also. We have some holiday news. Um, I'm very happy to share that all of our McKinvento families have been adopted for the holidays. We have 105 families that have been adopted by district employees and community partners. This is so amazing during this time that so many people are limited in resources, working remotely, or not able to deliver gifts um, to central office. So the fact that we had every family adopted is amazing. Thank you to all who made this possible. We have such a generous community. Um, great news from parents as teachers. Uh, we continue to serve families even remotely. They are hosting a group connection that will be held through Zoom at 5:00 PM on December 10th. Um, the parent as teachers families that are RSVP will have an activity bag delivered through a non-contact porch drop-off before the event with supplies for the virtual activities, including a snack. Um, so far, they have held three other virtual group connections since August, and they have had great turnouts. Board members, if you would like to observe one of these group connections, please let me know, and I will send you the Zoom link. They are great, great to see. What's interesting, we have some statistics of parents as teachers compared to last year's data. At this point, we are serving 13% more children, 8% more families, and they have completed 19% more home visits. So amazing work, parents as teachers, educators. We also have the police officers reading to kids, and we wanted to highlight this because it's a little bit outside of what they normally do. Um, so we want to celebrate the work of our district police officers who read virtually to students in the, um, early childhood, uh, centers groups. So we have Kayla Carruthers, Matt Galobski, and Pete Scott. These are three officers that read to our early childhood education students. Thank you so much for being role models for our edu-, um, for our students. And I hear that everyone had a great time, so that's, that's good, too. Next week is, um, tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, we are going to join other districts in celebrating National Special Education Day. So this is another opportunity to celebrate all of our special education teachers and staff who have made their passion to help our students in Kansas City, Kansas public schools. Um, the first week of December, December the 7th through the 13th is National Computer Science Week. And we want us to join us with Diploma Plus in highlighting the celebration uh, of Computer Science Education Week. This is a national call to action to inspire K-12 students to learn about computer science, advocate for equity in computer science, and celebrate the contributions of students, teachers, and partners. And we will be participating in a week-long activities which include National Hour of Code. So stay tuned for that. Um, a reminder to board members, on Friday, we have the KISA Outside Visitation Team. You have received information about our Year Three KISA OVT visit, which will occur this Friday. And we would like to invite you to join in the listening and learning as our district teams present to the OVT. Once the visit occurs and we receive the written feedback, we will share our report with the board. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the team that worked so hard on this report and will make all of us so proud with the high-quality presentation that they put together. It was, it was impressive to read the work that has been done since the, the last visit, and also the quality of the work. Thank you so much. United Way of Greater Kansas City is that time of the year. We wa- we want to know, um, that, you know, we all know that it's been a, it's been a very trying year for so many families, and so we want to encourage everyone to give, um, the donations raised during the 5K the district has launched the, um, this year, sorry, this yearly United Way campaign. So employees who want to donate can do so in one of three different ways. On the computer, on the phone via text, or with a, uh, paper form. The campaign will run through the end of this month, so please give for those who are less fortunate. Um, I mentioned the, uh, Early Bird 5K, so a couple of initiatives to keep all of us healthy in these times that we have to be indoors or isolated away from families. We have, um, had a, a virtual 5K. Uh, 251 employees and their families took part, and there was a total raised for United Way of $1,061. And it doesn't stop there. There is now a challenge to walk 40 miles from now until the winter break. And the idea is to complete 10 miles a week until the holiday break, and you can win prizes. So, um, so far, 300 people have signed up for the competition. So if you're not one of the 300 people, we want to see your name there so we can all walk virtually together. Thank you so much. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Miguel. And for any board members that have questions about Friday's meeting, please contact Dr. Miguel, and she can get you more information about the schedule, but you should have that in your Friday updates or the updates that you received with that information. So thank you, Dr. Miguel. Lots going on in our district, um, so-
Yeah.
Plenty, plenty to do, so thanks for the information. Just a few updates for me. Um, for board members, also a reminder that tomorrow starts the KASB Annual Conference. If you did register, if Ms. Smith registered you, you should have received an email from KASB um, with the information on how to log in. Um, that begins tomorrow. If you have any trouble or having issues signing on, um, please contact Ms. Smith or in your email, um, you, there, there should be a troubleshooting way, um, with KASB to make sure you can log in. Um, also, don't forget that next Friday, I believe it's next Friday, uh, December 11th, we have our board training with KASB as well. Uh, more information and Zoom link to come with that as well. Um, just a, a couple of other things, um, I do want to, to, to mention, um, for those that are watching, uh, we did have our, for initial meeting with JG Consulting, who is supporting the district and the Board of Education in our search for a permanent superintendent position. Um, that is underway. They will be conducting community, um, feedback surveys and contacting folks, uh, in the next several weeks. Um, so be on the lookout for a way to, to, um, give your input and feedback on the superintendent search. There is also a survey up on our website, um, that anyone can access. It's really quick and short. Uh, we'd love to have as many community folks participate in the survey as possible to give us feedback on what you're looking for in our superintendent search as well. So, um, if you have questions, um, you can contact myself, uh, Ms. Page, or, um, you can even contact our Communications Department, uh, Mr. Edwin Burch, and he can help, help, uh, guide you in the right direction. Um, if you would like to give feedback and, and are not contacted, or as, uh, community comment, um, um, meetings take place virtually, um, and you would like to participate, we'll make sure that you get that information, but, um, contact us if you want, if you would like more information as well. Um, today being Giving Tuesday, I just want to give a shout out to, um, the foundation for our Kansas City, Kansas Foundation for Excellence, who continues to do good work for our district. Um, you can always give. It's not too late on Giving Tuesday. Uh, the foundation does support our district in classrooms with grants to our schools and to our teachers, um, to our classrooms to support our teachers, and also scholarships for our students. So, um, it's not too late. You can still give on Giving Tuesday today, um, to the Foundation for Excellence or your nonprofit of your choice as well. Um, and then, uh, lastly, I just wanted to- Um, and then uh, lastly, I just wanted to again share uh, about our Enough is Enough campaign that continues to, to move forward as uh, we continue to see um, violence in our community, um, and, and, and other issues going on. Uh, you know, please sign on to our website. You can find the Enough, Enough is Enough um, pledge to um, stop the violence and to um, for us to continue to breed a healthier community. Um, so please log on to our website and look up Enough is Enough uh, for more information and sign on to that pledge as well. Um, so with that, uh, if there are any other board members who have any other updates before we move forward, or anything else to add? Great. Thank you. Um, so we will move forward with our agenda and come to the public library. Dr. Miguel?
We would ask that you approve the payment of bills for the public libraries.
Oh, moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any questions? Not Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Shout out to Ms. Levers. Uh, I love the tree in the background and to all of our library staff who continue to do great work to keep our community informed and um, there's lots of resources on the library webpage. So thank you all for your continued support and the work that you all do for our community and for our district. Thank you. With that, can moving on with our agenda, we've got some board updates coming up. And the first one comes from a couple of guests that we have, Ms. Bianca Garcia and Erin Gabbert, who are joining us to talk to the board and give us an update uh, on a Casey Flavors campaign. I believe I saw them on earlier. If you want to unmute yourself, I think I see you. Good evening. Thank you for joining us today.
Hello. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much for having us. Um, we do have a short presentation to share with the board. Um, I'll go ahead and share my screen here and hopefully it works for me here. Okay. Okay, so my name is Bianca Garcia. I am the Tobacco-Free Wyandotte Coordinator for the Unified Government Public Health Department. And I have Erin Hubert with me, um, who is the Senior Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association. So we wanted to bring this flavored tobacco initiative to the board, um, and hopefully get your support in moving this forward. Um, so we have a few slides to go over and just provide a little bit of context for you. Um, so to start off with, um, I wanted to give a little bit of background of tobacco and health in our community. We know that tobacco use is one of the leading causes of preventable death and disease in the United States. Um, we also know that twenty-eight percent of cancer deaths in Kansas are attributable to tobacco use. Along with that, high tobacco use rates lead to low county health rankings. And so unfortunately, Wyandotte County is ranked at ninety-nine out of a hundred and three counties. So we know that our tobacco use rate is pretty high compared to the state. We have a tobacco use of twenty-one percent compared to seventeen. Um, nationally, we're even higher than that. And nationally, the average is fourteen percent. We also have an exceedingly higher lung cancer rate compared to the state average. Um, we experience about eighty-three point nine lung cancer cases per one hundred thousand in our population compared to our state. Um, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Erin for some information on youth impact.
Great. Thank you, Bianca, and thank you all for having us present tonight. So I'm going to share a little bit about our two biggest focus areas of why we are um, initiating uh, um, some work around flavored tobacco and eliminating the sale of flavored tobacco. Um, I don't think it's a secret that um, we have realized over the last year or so that um, that vaping has become a epidemic, epidemic among our youth. In nineteen ninety-seven, one in four teens were smoking. And um, the good news is, is that in two thousand eighteen, only one in twenty were using cigarettes. And there was a lot of work that went into it, but it took a really long time to get that number to where it is. But unfortunately, with the entry of um, e-cigarettes and specifically the Juul um, product, that number in teens has risen quite a bit and we're back to one in four teens um, using vaping products. Next slide, please. So you can see here on this um, chart that um, overwhelmingly fruit and now menthol flavors are really the most popular um, among, among young people. They're easier to uh, they're easier to use and they taste good and they're fun. Um, and that is why a big focus for us is really on these flavored products. And um, you'll see that obviously the fruit flavors have been the highest for um, the last few years, but that um, menthol is really coming up there right alongside um, the fruit flavor. And so that's an important part of this as well. Next slide, please. So I mentioned um, the product Juul, and I wanted to share a little bit about the rise of Juul because that has been really what we've identified as what, as the, the um, the event that essentially brought us to this point of so many youth using um, e-cigarettes. So Juul is, if you're not familiar, the most, has been the most popular e-cigarette on the market. It's very, it's a very slick product. It's designed, you can see the packaging looks very similar to an Apple product almost. It's got the very um, crisp, you know, white box with a lot of extra packaging. Um, similar to, like I said, any kind of um, Apple product you might find, uh, an iPhone or a um, you know, anything along those lines. So um, and the night, the thing about it is that it's very discreet. It looks like a U S B flash drive. Um, and with Juul and, and most e-cigarettes actually, um, the cloud of smoke essentially dissipates very, very quickly. And um, and there's not much scent to it. So it's very easy for young people to use these products um, in front of, around adults, in class, um, at school without anyone even realizing it's happening. I have a teenage son and he shared that um, someone in his class last year took a puff off their Juul right when the teacher turned around and the teacher had no idea. And that certainly isn't the fault of the teacher. Um, it's just the way these products have been designed. The next slide. So how did youth learn about Juul and how did um, they become, it become so popular? And it's clear here with just these, a couple of um, examples of their advertising is that from the start, Juul was really targeting young people. Um, these are a couple of the examples of their advertising. Um, and I think you can tell this is the colors, the models they use are younger. Um, they look very um, cool and hip, so to speak, which makes me not hip at all, the fact that I use that word. But um, but clearly um, something fun that is, that is, you know, directed more at youth than high school students, even middle of schoolers, um, than it would necessarily an older adult. Next slide. And another trend that I wanted to share and bring to light a little bit, because it's something to me that's really concerning, um, is an, is a trend called self-vaping. All three of these pictures here are actually vaping devices. Um, so on the left, there's a backpack there and while it says vape wear on it, that would be very easy to take a Sharpie and a black Sharpie and mark over that to where it just looks black. Um, but there is a tube that comes out the side of it, similar to um, what you'd see in like a hiking backpack that where you can drink water from. But this tube actually um, is connected to a vaping um, device inside of it or where it connect, you can connect a vaping device to it and vape very easily without people realizing that's what you're doing. The um, hoodie sweatshirt in the middle is the same way. If you look closely at the end of the hoodie strings, those are actually um, where the vaping, um, where the vape comes out. And so it just looks like you have a little bit of a hood, like the end of your hoodie string in your mouth, chewing on it. And then um, the, the final picture there is um, is a smart watch is what it looks like. And it, and it does work uh, um, to an extent as a smart watch, or at least as a watch, but that um, piece in the middle pops out um, very easily and um, and you can vape from that as well. So it just goes to show that the vaping industry is really working um, very creatively to make these devices easier for young people to use um, and be secretive about and not get caught doing, doing so. Next slide. Bianca, I'll give this one to you.
Thank you. Um, so not only did Erin really point out that the tobacco industry is really targeting our youth through advertisement, through the products, but in our community, we also have tobacco retailers that are extremely close to most high schools. So seven out of nine high schools in Wyandotte County have a tobacco retailer within half a mile of the school. Um, and so this figure here shows the location of tobacco retailers within a mile and half a mile. So the smaller, darker circle, that is the half-mile radius and then the outer circle is the one mile. Um, so we can see that this really starts to play into social determinants of health and really thinking about systems, structures, the built environment and how, how that impacts health. Um, it may be more difficult for someone to avoid initiation or quit smoking because of the built environment. So not only are retailers found within half a mile of most schools, they also exist at a much higher rate. In Wyandotte County, our tobacco density is much higher compared to Johnson County. Um, so if we think about tobacco density, we have one retailer per one thousand population and Johnson County has point four. Um, so it's definitely a different environment. Um, and so with this flavor ban effort, we would have the potential to impact thirteen thousand youth in our community from three different school districts. And so um, Erin will go ahead and touch a little bit on adults and flavors.
Sure. So the other piece of this and why um, eliminating the sale of flavored tobacco products is important is really about um, about minorities and especially the use of menthol tobacco products. Um, menthol flavors have um, without a doubt adversely affect, affected diverse communities. And um, menthol cigarettes are, can be a lot harder to quit than non-menthol cigarettes. You can see on this slide that um, of those who use tobacco products, um, African Americans use um, eighty-four percent of eighty-four point six percent, excuse me, of African Americans who use um, tobacco products use menthol products. Of um, the Hispanic and Latino population, forty-six point nine percent youth use menthol and you can see the rest, how it falls. Um, and especially the, another one that's concerning is the um, young um, LGBTQ um, youth. Seventy-one percent of those tobacco users use menthol products. And so it shows um, why menthol really is important to be included when we are talking about flavors. Next slide. So the tobacco companies have really um, done a good job or bad, in our opinion, of profiling um, that's in targeting specific populations. They have a shameful history that really includes use, um, targeting youth and adults in communities of color as well as underserved populations with menthol products. And what it's done is really resulted in disproportionately higher use of rates, uh, use rates by minority smokers. Um, these tobacco companies are known for um, for different advertising methods that really um, really focus on certain minority populations. They utilize cultural events and um, cultural um, just different initiatives to really reach different um, populations. And they've been known to um, sponsor events that are targeted to a certain population and um, specific minority population and give price cuts and things like that. Um, and oftentimes you'll see within communities that um, public health practices that are put into place really leave, there are gaps that are um, that are in there that, that leave different minority communicate, minority um, populations and neighborhoods um, vulnerable to the type of predatory behavior that tobacco companies use. Next slide. So that's just along the lines of what I was saying. Um, there are up to ten times more tobacco ads in black neighborhoods than other neighborhoods. That a lot, that right there is a really good example of the way that um, tobacco companies very clearly target minority um, minority tobacco users. It's certainly um, not an equal opportunity killer for sure. And as we've mentioned numerous times, um, smoking disproportionately affects those most in need, um, including um, our lower-income populations. Next slide. And these are a few examples of um, what I was referring to as far as tobacco companies really targeting certain communities and cultural um, events and outreach. These are three advertisements that um, that, that a cool tobacco company in Newport used, um, that really targeted um, the African-American population. Um, it, it, you know, cool salutes Black History Month. Um, the one, uh, the cool filter kings that's promoting uh, an event that they, that they used to do in different, and throughout the country in black neighborhoods, um, where they would give away product and really um, and really pull in a lot of young um, of, of young minorities. And so um, you can see these are just really good examples of exactly what the tobacco industry has done for decades. Next slide. And I'll give this back over to you, Bianca.
Thank you, Erin. Um, so we know that Kansas City, Missouri is, has brought this forward to their elected officials. And so we want to make this a effort that's in unison um, across jurisdictions. So there are over hu- two hundred and seventy jurisdictions that had already banned flavors across the nation. Um, there is a federal flavor ban uh, that was put in effect in late two thousand nineteen. But unfortunately, this flavor ban is only partial. It doesn't cover um, disposable products or refillable products. It's really only focused on pod-based products. So the jewels that Erin mentioned earlier, those can no longer be sold in flavors with the exemption for menthol. Um, so that's still on the table. With the puff bars, those are disposable products that can be still be sold in multiple flavors. Um, the watch vape that Erin mentioned, that e-liquid that is added to the vape can still be sold in a variety of flavors. So that is not encompassing everything. And so really best practice suggests implementation of local ordinances that really help fill in the gaps. Um, and so that's, that's what we're attempting to do through this. Um, along with that, with COVID nineteen and the pandemic, we've learned more and more about what the association between tobacco and tobacco use and COVID nineteen is. And so research is still being conducted to determine that association, but what we do know is that smoking and vaping weakens the immune system. And it also affects lung health, which makes it harder for you to fight off an infection. COVID nineteen is a respiratory illness. So just knowing those two things, it would, it would be um, it would be considered that there would be some sort of association. A study that was published by the Journal of Adolescent Health did show this. Um, so young people who had ever used e-cigarettes were five times more likely to be diagnosed with COVID nineteen and young people who were ever users, uh, dual users of e-cigarettes or conventional cigarettes were seven times. So that dual use even puts them at a higher risk. Um, there's also some new research on COVID nineteen disease progression. So a different study that looked at the severity of COVID nineteen with tobacco use did find that association, um, that there was a significant association between smoking and disease progression. Um, so a lot of that could be due to lung health. Um, so really damage to the lungs from smoking and vaping um, can lead to just more severe infections. So the ordinance that um, we are proposing to our community is one that is all-encompassing, one that includes all flavored tobacco, all products, really including the menthol, the open tank, the disposable products, to include thorough definitions that really helps identify what these products are, what they can look like. Um, and then a strong enforcement piece that would put the health department as that authority um, to make sure that compliance is occurring with some sort of escalating fine structure. So we know that removing, simply removing these products from the table is not the only solution. Along with that, there need to be resources and um, programs for cessation. So that's a big piece of the puzzle as well. So there are a few resources locally and at the state level that we know we can implement and address um, some of that addiction. So there is the American Heart Association Tobacco-Free Schools Toolkit, um, the Kansas Quit Line that's primarily focused for adults. Um, and then there is a new My Life, My Quit Youth Cessation Program um, for those under the age of eighteen that just was released in January of this year. And so that's um, for any youth who um, can reach out confidentially through text or chat to get assistance to quit vaping or smoking. Um, and we also work with vibrant health clinics to primarily focus on those uninsured and underserved communities. And we also work with vibrant health clinics to primarily focus on those uninsured and underserved communities or members of our community to help with cessation. There's also a free nicotine replacement therapy program where we partner with a few pharmacies in the area to offer those, the gum, the lozenges for uninsured residents in the area. So we bring this information to the board today to just ask for support in this effort. Our call to action of you is to consider if you can support this effort. Think about the impact on our youth in our community and also the adults in our community. We talked about health equity. So in the materials that were sent to you, including with this PowerPoint, there was a sign-on link. And that link is just very helpful for us to know the level of support we can expect and to know how much to go going forward with this effort. But Erin, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
The only other thing that I would add real quick, just because I am with the American Heart Association, is to share very quickly just a little bit more about that first resource bullet point because that is a resource that is specific to school districts. And it's something that was just released a few weeks ago that we are really excited about. And it's a, it's an initiative for school districts who want to evaluate their current tobacco policies and put improvements in place. And it's, the American Heart Association can work alongside of you to pass potentially stronger policies and look at the way that it's being dealt with when youth are caught using tobacco products. It puts measures in place that are less punitive and more supportive towards youth. So instead of looking at school suspension necessarily and sending kids home to just use these products at home potentially by themselves, it really creates a process where kids are supported in quitting and not using those products anymore. And so if this is something that the school board is interested in, I would love to speak with you further and work with you. And if nothing else, I can share the link for the toolkit for you. And we can look at your current policy and how this may be of help to you. There's also some potential funding support that's included that comes from a grant from CVS, which is our partner in this initiative. And so that is just an FYI for you all that, you know, would love to speak further down the road about if it's something you guys are interested in.
Great. Thank you Bianca and Erin for the information. So I'll open up for a couple of questions from board members just to stay on task. I'll start off with just a quick question, I guess. So you're coming with an ask for us to sign on as a supporter of the ordinance. I'm curious if you can share a little bit of what that timeline is or what does that look like in terms of what's next with the ordinance? When is it going in front of the commissioner or the UG? Or how does that work? What's your timeline? And what does it mean for us to sign on as a supporter of the ordinance?
Sure. Bianca, do you want me to jump in on that? Because I think I probably got, I just got some new updated information on timelines.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we have kind of been a, we've put this out there to the commissioners in what we've calling a soft way and sharing this information with commissioners. And we started that process about a month or so ago, maybe a little bit longer at this time. I just realized, remembered it's December. So this was probably more back in December. And in general, commissioners were supportive. Obviously, COVID-19 is a big focus right now, and that's where their priority has been. But it's looking like we are going to continue to work on building community support over the next month or so and look at putting this in front of committee on the, from the commission, probably in January is what we're looking at. And so, yes, what this letter would be, if you read through it, it basically says that as the school district, that you are supportive and that you agree that this is an important, important initiative to put forth in Kansas City, Kansas.
Thank you. Other questions from board members?
I don't have a question. I do want to just say thank you for this presentation. I work with a lot of youth and when I hear you talk about how accessible these are, it's absolutely true. I've actually caught a few of our youth with the vape tool and asked them where they got it from. And they were, it was provided to them at a service station, like they just gave them to the kids. And so thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing.
It's great information and thank you for sharing. I did not get a copy of that letter. So I think it's important for the board to review the actual letter and what it says so that we can have consistency in signing off to ensure that we know what we're signing off on.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Yeager. Yeah. So maybe what we can do is circulate that letter to all board members. And so kind of table that ask for today's meeting, since not every one of the board members has the letter in front of them, just to make sure that everyone feel, would feel comfortable or what you would think. And give you time to read the letters at our next board meeting, potentially have, potentially have some action if it's what the board would like. So I agree. Any other questions before we continue on? So Bianca and Erin, thank you so much for the information. I'll follow up or Ms. Smith will follow up to get that letter from you and also get the presentation that was given today. I don't think that was uploaded. I don't think we, I don't know if we shared that with the entire board. So we'll, we'll get that information in the letter from you and then we'll circulate that and come get back with you with any other questions we might have.
Great. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We'll check out the school kids for sure. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll make sure to send that your way and follow up with it.
I appreciate that, Erin. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we will continue on, move on with our agenda. And next we have another guest with us, Mr. Gosa. I believe this is not your first time in front of our board, if I remember correctly. So he is here to give us an update on a Juul vaping suit that he and his team are working on. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Gosa.
No problem. I'm happy to be here. And it was great to hear Erin and Bianca's, their presentation because I think it's a pretty good dovetail into what, you know, I have to talk about. I think, and I did speak, and I probably didn't speak to everyone, but some people probably have heard some things I've had to say. So and I know that Bianca and Erin has certainly covered the nature of the problem that we're all looking at. Just for a way of background, I used to have a presentation that was like 20 slides long. And when I talked to parents, and I think the first presentation I made was probably two years ago, most parents didn't even know what a Juul was. And we have, most kids knew, but most parents didn't. We've come a long way since then. And obviously, a lot of water under the bridge in the sense that there's been ongoing litigation even since we last met. Just to give you an update, we work with a consortium of six law firms. Those law firms represent 22 school districts in Kansas and over 250 school districts nationwide. The lawsuit is against Juul and some other entities as well, including Altria, relating to the marketing and sales of their, what we would call an electronic nicotine delivery system or an ends product and what we refer to as vaping product. Just our contention here, and I think there's no question, but that it is a fact that there is a vaping epidemic. Bianca and Erin gave you some statistics, both nationwide and maybe even more locally. But if you look back in 2011, I think the statistics were 1.5% of high school students had ever vaped. By 2017, it was 11.7. By 2018, it was 21. And while I didn't catch the exact numbers, I know the 2019 numbers are higher. It's our contention in these lawsuits that Juul caused or directly contributed to cause this epidemic. And they did it in three, by utilizing kind of three-pronged approach here. First, the device, which you've seen pictures of and talked about how sleek and cool it is. And we'll talk about it a minute. The particular kind of nicotine that they used and then the design of their marketing program. Just in terms of the device, and you've seen that it's a, it is a slick, unique, stealthy device that can be hidden very easily. It looks very much like a USB port. It can be, when you put it in a pile of things, it's very hard to tell it from. If you looked at this USB port, you wouldn't know that that was any different than any other kind of device that you might use in a computer. And that's actually a Juul that's charging. So clearly it is a, it has some basic attraction. And Juul went to the archives for the tobacco, where the tobacco archives in San Francisco to at the University of Southern Calif, or I guess University of California in San Francisco. And they dug up a lot of the colors that were used by Big Tobacco and used a lot of that advertising in terms of developing their basic packaging model. One interesting thing is it's got a party mode on it, which is essentially a device that it makes it look like a round ball, you know, they'll see those crystal balls on dance floors that shoot lights all around. And that seems to hardly be something that, if you were really trying to get a middle-aged smoker to quit, that that would be something that you would need. But that's an aspect that we look to and not that there's anything wrong with making a cool, neat product. That's okay. But when you combine it with the other things that Juul did, it becomes a particular danger to attracting young people. Probably the biggest issue and thing is that the kind of nicotine that they use was what was referred to as a nicotine salt. Most products before Juul had used what's called a free base nicotine. When you do a free base nicotine and you use any kind of relatively high concentration in nicotine, like in a vaping product or a cigarette, you know that the body's first reaction is to gag and cough. And any first time smokers can barely get a cigarette down. And it takes time for them to overcome the body's natural protective mechanism and develop some hollering for that kind of nicotine level. The difference between that and nicotine salts is a nicotine salt allows you to get a high concentration of nicotine without any of the throat hit associated with a basic cigarette product or another free base vaping product. So it is very easy to inhale. Somebody that uses Juul for the first time could use a pod the very first day and not have any necessary gag reflex or coughing or immediate reaction to it. And it allows the nicotine to get to the brain in a higher dose at a quicker level, which we would argue results in developing addiction more quickly. You combine the design with the patented, the nicotine salts and the way that it is easily used by first time users with the marketing program. And you saw examples that Bianca and Erin shared of the kind of marketing that Juul did and the advertisements that they had. And it certainly looks like they, if you make something and you put in, you know, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24-year-olds, a lot of 16, 17, 15-year-olds are going to want to try to emulate that. And that's certainly what happened here. And Juul bragged that it was the most data-driven company in the world. And they utilize social media platforms like nobody's business. They understood the importance of getting influencers, people that had followers of 30,000 people or more. They would contract with those people to get their name out there, knowing that there was an exponential growth model. Once you got into the social media network, the Juul hashtag, even though Juul is now taking things off the market, done things to try to, after the FDA has been on them, to try to take back kind of where they were. The hashtag of Juul kind of lives on forever on the internet and it's very hard to go back and undo that. And now people, I guess, and I'm not an expert on all of this, but retweet, follow, tweet out the Juul hashtag. And it has millions of hits still to this day, even though it's been taken off the market. And they've removed some of their social media presence. So we talked a little bit before, what are the damages? You know, we have, you saw an article that Erin and Bianca showed about kind of the impact, a potential impact of Juul and COVID. Well, the person that wrote that article is someone we have had lots of contact with. And I will tell you, they will talk about teenage addiction is, you know, the teenage brain is in a developmental stage. And there are all kinds of specific physical things that are going on in the development of the brain that make teenagers more susceptible to addiction. But, you know, it is a fact that most people that have addictions later in life started off having either smoking, using tobacco products, or developing some sort of addiction before they were the age of 18. Hardly anybody wakes up at the age of 25 or 26 and says, I'm going to start smoking now. Almost everyone has developed that addiction prior to the age of 18. And that's why it's so important to bring it into this as quickly as possible. And partly what makes this such a tragic event is the fact that, as Bianca and again Erin were showing, the statistics on youth smoking had gone down and the advertising and education that had gone on before this time had been so effective in eliminating youth smoking. And all of a sudden, now we have this vaping epidemic. And there are a number of articles and statistics that show that people will go, instead of just switching from cigarettes to vaping or vaping to, and not ever using cigarettes, that vaping will be a gateway for other addictions and for the use of future cigarette use as well. So these are all things that, you know, we are contesting in these litigations. We first got started in this, and I will tell you, my partner, my law partner, one of his kids was certainly had an addiction to Juul. He felt very personally strongly about this. And we spent lots of time investigating this and were one of the first firms involved in evaluating the potential impact on schools that this has had and the educational process in general. There are a number of cases now filed around the country. Those cases, for the most part, are pending in the Northern District of California now, pending in front of Judge William Orick. There are a number of class actions that are filed, different kinds of litigation. We've not filed that, there is a school class action case. But these, the cases that we're filing and that we have filed on behalf of many, many school districts are individual cases claiming damages related to increased expenses, cost of future education and counseling. One of the issues that you all obviously face is how do you take care of this problem? I know there's been discussion of whether it should be punitive in nature, whether it should be educational, whether it should be treatment oriented, but there are costs associated with. First of all, you suspend a child, you've got to be able to provide education to them still. You've got to be able to deal with parents who are going to hire lawyers and contest being, having their child suspended. You have to decide whether you're going to hire an extra school nurse to help deal with problems associated with vaping or counselors associated with trying to get people, if they're addicted to nicotine, how to break that addiction. And while there are a lot of programs out there, many people are so addicted and become so addicted to these products that they need very specialized counseling.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. Just going to, just going to share, we have just a few minutes because we do have several other things on the agenda that we want to get to. So I hate to interrupt, but it's just.
No, that's all I got.
Okay.
That's all I got. So anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And so I know you sent some information to Mr. Goheen, our attorney. So I'm curious, one question I do have is again, similar to previous presentation around your timeline. And then are there other school districts in our area that you're working with regarding what you and your team are working on?
So in terms of timeline, there's no specific deadline that needs to be met. You know, we would argue the sooner the better, so to speak, to get in line. But here, we represent Shawnee Mission School District, Olathe School District, Blue Valley School District, a number of school districts in the Wichita area, Spring Hill. There are 22 school districts in Kansas City that we are working with or in the state of Kansas and many of the other school districts in the Kansas City metropolitan area.
Thank you. Other questions from board members?
I'm just curious, how connected are you to KC Flavors? Because it seemed like we're listening to the same information.
Yeah, you know, we're not, but I'm now very interested in talking to them about some of their statistics, especially on a local level. So I'm glad I listened in. But the answer, we're not connected in any way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So your ask from, and yeah, I think that's a great connection for you tonight. So is your ask from the board to consider signing on to the agreement that you had sent to Mr. Goheen?
Yeah, exactly right. I think in the past, most school districts that we represent end up passing some kind of, you know, statement about they wanted to proceed forward with litigation and then retaining us signing a contract, which we have said, you know, we pay all the initial expenses. So there wouldn't be any immediate, there wouldn't be an expense portion of this, other than there would be some time commitment with respect to discovery. And I will say in way of disclosure, that recently, we are kind of in a battle right now about some FOIA requests that have been made to various school districts as well about information. And obviously, some of those things take time. But we are doing as much as we can to minimize both the impact of time and any expense to the school districts that we represent.
Thank you. And the purposes of transparency, Mr. Goheen is not on the call with us just yet. So I'm a little hesitant to make any action without our attorney online. I don't know if other board members feel differently.
I would say yes, let's table it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no problem. And you all can let me know if you have any questions or want to ask, you know, any further in the future, if you want me to come back or answer questions specifically, just let me know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gosa. Board members, you do have that document in your board library. So you can check that out. If you do have further questions, please email myself, Ms. Page. We can get that to Mr. Gosa and/or Mr. Goheen. And then we can potentially bring that up at our next board meeting. Thank you so much, Mr. Gosa, for your time tonight. And I hope you connect with Erin and Bianca as well.
Yeah, I'll try. In fact, if one of you'd send me like on this chat, your contact information, that'd be great. Thank you.
There's no chat, so maybe I
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll figure it out. No problem. Thank you.
We'll get you connected. Thank you so much. Okay, so thank you so much, board. And we will move on with our agenda. And I think, so Dr. Miguel, next up?
Yes, the next item is a recommendation that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the K5 Amplify Science Resource as submitted by Darcy Swan, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Anderson, interim Assistant Superintendent.
Great, thank you so much. I'm just gonna share my screen. Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Miguel. Tonight, we are wrapping back around to the K5 Amplify Science Resource, this time approval. Last time, we were here to give you some information about the product. So for tonight, we want to help you understand our current status of resource adoptions. And we want to provide projected costs for future adoptions. Those were two questions that you all had provided us the last time we were here. So we want to make sure that we address those answers tonight. And then lastly, we will request approval of the Amplify Resources for K5 Science. When we were here last time, we had shared with you the adoption cycle that as a curriculum and instruction team, we have set forth for ourselves looking at kind of where we've been with the 2019, 2020 adoptions. What we are proposing for this year, looking at the science K5, knowing that we also are doing some work around social studies, world language, and our ELA electives for high school. Our goal, and this is to help answer the question of when will we be caught up with some of the gaps that we currently have in our resource adoption cycle? Our goal is that we will be caught up by the end of next school year with at least the purchasing of some resources that would then be implemented the following fall. We know that next year, we will have the continued purchase of the science resources that we're asking for approval tonight, as well as we've set a goal for ourselves to look at ELA K through three, getting a core resource in the hands of our teachers that address the structured literacy pieces with the State's Dyslexia Initiative, as well as Science 912. So with that, we would be on track for creating an adoption cycle that would provide us about a six year cycle for our core resources and our elective resources. The 2022, 2023 school year gives us a little flexibility if we've been a little aggressive on this year and next year's timeline. That year provides us some flexibility because ELA and science, we're just really looking at extending our current resources to get them to their six year cycle versus a new resource adoption with a new product. So that will at least get us on track for the next several years to be looking at one major adoption per year, which helps us financially and helps us fiscally plan ahead for our needs as a department and as a district. One of the questions that you had posed for us is, what are the projected costs? So let's start with elementary first. We are up to date with ELA four, five, grades four and five, and then math K5. Where we need some resources would be ELA K3. And then social studies K5, we're proposing the science K5 so that we could be caught up there. Again, that million dollar projected cost would be paid over two years, which when we look at our budget for this year, and I'll show you a slide that has that information, leaves us some wiggle room to actually continue with the social studies adoption that that we would be looking at for this year. Currently, our social studies cadres are meeting and working on identifying our gaps for resources. And they're starting with open educational resources. What is already out there from vetted, you know, resource sites where we can get some really good, timely resources in the hands of our teachers and students that meet our standards, knowing that we've also budgeted in case there is a resource that needs to be purchased for elementary? So we're getting really close to being caught up there. Secondary is where we see a little more of a gap. We are caught up with our math core and electives. Our ELA core is up to date, though we are probably looking at extending that adoption in another couple of years to get it to a six year adoption. Our science core six through eight is up to date. So where we're really looking at is our ELA electives, again, social studies, because we're going to look at social studies K12 this year. And again, those cadres are working to identify their needs and filling those needs with open educational resources first, and then determining what needs they have in regards to the revised standards for social studies. And then our science core electives is in another year. That's not this year's need. But world language is also looking at filling a gap with resources. Again, first looking at open educational resources. And then we're padding that with some money for anything that they might need as they continue their work to determine what they feel they need for a resource. Which then kind of leads us back to the K5 Science purchase that we had talked about last time. This is for sixth grade levels over six years. So it is a six year adoption. We're receiving the digital teacher and student book licenses. With that, we get materials kits where there are books to put in the hands of students to learn more about science, to research, to collaborate and work in groups, along with equipment and some consumable materials for students. And with that would come professional learning for our teachers, not just focusing on the resource, but also focusing on just really good science instruction and pedagogy. That comes with that million dollar price tag. But when we look at that over six years per student, it's about $16.89 per student per year for the life of the adoption. So what that looks like from our budget standpoint is that we would be expending about $536,000 this year, knowing that the other $536,000 would be coming out of next year's budget, which still leaves us money in our budget both years to help fulfill some gaps that we have. One thing that we will do this year is to make a proposal for our budget next year that also incorporates the need for a K3 elementary reading resource. That reading resource, I think we had budgeted about 1.5 million would be the ask on that. And that is because typically, when you're looking at a core resource that has books in hand, that has ancillary materials, sound wall cards, manipulatives, vocabulary resources, you're looking at about $225 per student. So those are pretty pricey, but yet we want it to be comprehensive, all inclusive, and meet the needs of our students. So that's, that's where we are right now in terms of filling, filling those resource gaps and looking at making sure that our students have the best resources out there. So at this time, Suzie Legg is on with us tonight as well, and myself. We are willing to answer any questions that you might have at this point. But our ask tonight is that we have the approval to go ahead and move forward with the purchase of those Amplify Resources.
Darcy, this is Dr. Jaeger. Thank you so much for the detailed presentation. And it truly aligns with our strategic priorities that we created for the district. So in looking at how it compares with our priorities, it does seem to align that we do have these high expectations to ensure the rigorous standards and quality of instruction, as well as good stewards of resources. Because you've planned out the budget and showed us what to expect in the coming years. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve the Amplify Science Resource Adoption for K through 12. I'm sorry, K through five.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page. I have a question. I know she just put the motion on the floor. But in terms of professional learning, how is that spread out? Will the teachers have someone go over these materials, make sure they know how to use them throughout the year and work with them and how to get the best use? Because sometimes we didn't always get them the materials in time. So what's the time schedule? Do you have a tentative time schedule that you could talk about?
So before that, we have to make
But she, you asked for questions.
Right.
The motion came. So I mean, do we get to ask the question?
Absolutely, Ms. Page, absolutely. I thought I heard a second.
I never heard a
Right before your question.
I seconded Maxine.
Yeah, I thought I heard Ms. Drew right at the same time. So there's been a motion and a second. And now Ms. Page has asked a question. So Ms. Swan, if you wouldn't mind addressing the question that was presented, thank you.
Absolutely. And it's a great question because professional learning is essential for any program to do what we're asking it to do. So what happens is, once we have done the purchase order for those resources, we should have those resources in hand by late spring, early summer, to get those into the hands of teachers, knowing that we are going to take some time this spring to do some training with our teachers around the resource. We'll have training over the summer. And we've also worked with the company to make sure that we have training and onboarding for any new staff and training for returning staff in the fall as well. So we want to continue training the resource. The other piece of the PD plan is not just to train the resource, but also to train around the NGSS standards and also just good science instruction. So inquiry based instruction. How do we get kids to self generate questions? How do we get kids to become researchers? How do we get kids to write like scientists, read like scientists? So really, that's kind of the focus of the professional learning. It's going to be around the resource, absolutely, but also those good instructional practices that our teachers just need to have regardless of a resource.
Thank you.
Ms. Swan, this is Janie Humphries. I have a question for you. Do we have professional development dollars available to pay the teachers for this training that they're going to undergo?
That is probably something we'll need to work with Lisa Walker on any kind of, you know, monies in that way. The professional learning is actually, we've contracted with Amplify for their side of things. When it comes to the teacher side, we will try to look for times that are maybe synchronous as well as asynchronous. We'll look for times where, when they're returning, they're back on contract, but it's actually PD time that's reserved for district time. We also have some PD time reserved in the spring that wouldn't necessarily require them to be off contract and requiring pay. So we're going to be pretty creative as to how we find that time. But if we need to provide time off contract where we want to provide them their hourly wage for that, we'll work within our budget and also our Title II A dollars to see, you know, to make sure that we we meet their needs for that.
Okay, I just wanted us to start thinking now about how we were going to compensate them.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Darcy, this is Dr. Nguyen. And so looking at, well, let's say, number one, we only deal with one year budget at a time. We never commit ourselves to out years because we don't know what the money will have. So are you saying, and into the 2021 budget, you currently have $923,000 and you are, what are you, you're asking for how to spend it?
We're asking for approval to contract with Amplify to spend $536,000 this year, $536,000 next year. We'll have the materials in hand. But we're going to have to split that cost over two budget years in order to leave us some wiggle room to deal with social studies and the electives that we need to cover as well to get us back on track.
Okay, so here's the problem. We have not worked on 21, 22 budget, nor have we received funds. So we have no clue what we're going to receive in 21, 22 budget. Now, basic math, if that's going to be more than what we currently have. So, you know, Mr. President, I'm trying to understand how are you, why are you asking us, not so much you, Mr. President, but maybe Dr. Miguel, why are you asking us to approve funding for 21, 22 when we have not started on 21, 22 budget?
Dr. Do you want Dr. Miguel to answer that? Or would you like me?
Probably Dr. Miguel has the only authority to answer that.
And I think we're going with the projections of what we have had as curriculum budget historically. Matt, if you want to add?
Yes, usually, I mean, the last couple of years has always been that $900,000 projection. I don't think we've ever had anything less. I would have to refer to Tracy Cacker or Mr. Covington to help us out. I know that that was our budget last year and it was the same this year. So looking at projections.
Right. Now, remember, there was money withheld from teaching staff that was reassigned, if I remember correctly, to be used in purchase of textbooks. Now, you know, let's, let's be transparent here. You are, if, tell me once more time, what is, what is the budget we had to work with 2021? Is it only 923.969 or is it more?
Currently, in the textbook line item that is in my budget that I was provided, it's $923,969. So we're having to work within that budget to meet and close our gaps. Yes. Which is why we're looking at spreading it over two years to leave us some wiggle room for the other needs that we know we have.
Right. And that's, that's, that's a little bit difficult for me to accept. And I don't, again, understand why you're, and this one, I guess, is for Dr. Miguel, why you would ask us to commit to, number one, funds that we, we think we're going to have, we don't have yet. You know, my vote would be on the contingency, but not clearly green light to, you know, essentially spend what we don't have, what you think we're going to get. But you usually don't ask to spend a second year budget when you don't know what the money you're going to have.
You're correct. And I think we're, again, we're going from the You, you are correct, and, and I think we're, again, we're going from the projections of what the budget has been and the need to catch up with the science. And, um, the fact that unless we did this, we would not be able to get all of the materials that we need to put in the hands of kids.
Darcy, and there's no open resource for science?
Uh, I wasn't here last year for the pilot phase of the work around science, but I, I know that Cheryl and her teams looked and exhausted all of the resources, whether it be OER, um, they also looked at another resource along with Amplify, and this is the one the team felt best met the needs of the standards and was, um, it, through their pilot, students and, uh, teachers recommended.
I think the important aspect for me is I appreciate us making sure the field that we're giving our students is leveled. This is not where we would want to cheapen our experience for students. I believe this goes back to our strategic plan and what we challenged Dr. Miguel to do, um, as well as more, uh, Darcy, is to ensure that we have a high-performing workplace in whatever we propose, that we have high expectancy for student achievement and high performance. You know, us having schools that are on probation with the state of Kansas is not acceptable. And the only way we can pull our students out of where we currently are is to ensure things are up-to-date as well as the best quality that can be found. So with that, I would ask that we could go ahead and approve this and move forward so that we can ensure that our students are getting what they need.
I think, and I appreciate that, um, uh, the, the line of questions are, you know, we do want to be good fiscal stewards of our resources. Um, and it looks like, you know, the team has gone through that. Um, Dr. Nguyen, I, I, you know, I appreciate the, the questions around, hey, how do we make sure we budget and have the, the resources for this? And we're not sure what that's going to look like. I think that's something Dr. Miguel and the team and Ms. Swan and the team continue to monitor. So, um, I appreciate that.
Let me comment, and, and I understand what you're saying, but let me suggest to you, financially, fiscally, responsibility, you never budget more than one year because you only receive funds for one year. I'm not, I'm not questioning quality, expectations. That is not the question. This is strictly a financial budget question. And.
Absolutely.
Let me, let me suggest, one could say, we know what we have for 2021. Next month, we start budgeting 2122. I mean, there is a way to be transparent, uh, responsible, love all the, the, um, on, on target, everything else. There's a way to do it within the law. And that's all I'm saying, that, you know, you, you could easily ask for 2021. You've got the money, you're, you're remaining 387. You're, we, you, one could say, then come January, it's how you frame it as well. Come January, when we start looking at the budget, you want to put that into the budget right now and set it aside instead of saying, just storming through. But that's, you know, once again, it comes back to budgeting experiences. And I, and, and that is something we need to watch, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Um, with that, I would go ahead and ask Ms. Smith, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Um, unless there are any other questions, I will ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call vote, please.
Darcy, can you close out your screen, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Just one moment. Thank you for your patience, Yolanda Clark.
Leslie, Yolanda Clark, um, my vote is yes. And, and I just want to say, as a board, we are responsible for our students 100%. We also are responsible for our budget 100%. So I understand both perspectives. I'm, I am saying yes and trusting that we will make sure that our funds are available to pay for our students' education. So I'm trusting the staff with that one, but I, I hear both perspectives or all perspectives.
Thank you. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries? Jan- Janie Humphries, yes, and I agree with Yolanda. Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Uh, Wanda Brownlee Page, I vote no. I think we should have only done it for one year and wait to see where the budget is going to go. But my vote is no.
Dr. Nguyen?
I support the one year, and it would have been, I believe, more professional. And that's not being critical, it's just being professional to suggest that when then we start our budgeting project, our, our budgeting, uh, sessions next month, that we, then you will lock in and kind of, um, propose that that second 2021, 535,000 is, is there. That is the, um, financial way to do it. That's the budgetary way to do it. And, um, it's just a matter of how you're doing it, how you're presenting it to us. So I, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I had to vote no.
My vote is yes. The way you did it was professional. It may be unconventional. The reality is we do have the ability to look and change the modi- and modify the budget at any time. One of our strategic priorities was to definitely support our students' success and to ensure that we trust the staff to be able to manage their budgets. It's very important to note that you did not do anything illegal. You did not do anything that was not professional. You did it professionally. You presented to us clearly. You answered our questions from last time, and you answered our concerns. And with that, my answer is yes.
Thank you, Ms. Swan, Mr. Anderson and team. Um, I don't think anyone was implying any illegality anywhere, um, but.
Thank you for saying that, because we didn't.
Your presentation. I, I, I understand. Thank you all, thank you, team. Um, thank you, board members. So we will continue on with our meeting.
Thank you all.
And next on the agenda.
I just wanted to say thank you and, and thank you for all of the feedback. And we are taking note of, of, um, all of your comments. And we assure you that, um, we will be, um, very careful and very thoughtful about how we, um, budget the money so, to, to make sure that it's where it needs to be. But we appreciate all of your feedback. Thank you so much. The next item is, um, a recommendation that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approved the reallocations of special ed funds to add two new positions. And I would like to invite Dr. Lori, um, to share some information with the board.
Yes, um, good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Page, the entire board, Dr. Miguel, and the community members that are listening today. I am here to give some information, um, in regards to our Special Education Department. I have spent the first 46 days on the job really holding true to, um, listening and learning about the needs of our department, where we are in regards to instruction, compliance, and many other factors that we are faced in our department. And I've had an opportunity to, to develop some ongoing meetings with the Special Education Leadership Team as well as other members, um, of the Special Education Department. And so these are some special education priorities that have come from that work in communications and review and observations and learning for our cooperative that are aligned to the district's strategic priorities. One being the instruction and student achievement, really having a focus on that. Our programming, our continuum of services far as what we are providing students legally for FAP, for Free and Appropriate Education, and our compliance, um, priorities in this, in the, in the system. Professional development and staffing, um, is also a priority so that we provide the necessary training, not only to our special education teachers and support staff, but, um, I have identified their need to have some professional development at the sped leadership level, our coordinators, our teacher leaders. Um, and then our fourth priority is the oversight and accountability. Um, we have so many functions of the Special Education Department. Accountability is one thing that I have heard throughout many conversations that we need to be very intentional on, um, around, uh, instruction, around our practices, the best practices of serving students with disabilities and our gifted students. Um, and so providing that oversight and accountability is also a pri- priority for us. Again, all aligned to the district's strategic priorities. Through that conversation, this is not an exhaustive list, but these are some areas of improvement, um, through conversations and review of some of our IEPs, evaluation reports, and our practices, and our handbooks that they compare it to the state requirements for processing in special education. These are some areas that I have found are, uh, areas of improvement. Um, I do want to add that there are some great things that have happened within the Special Education Department. We have dedicated staff who want to move forward and have this positive change and really begin to impact, um, the students with disabilities and our families that we serve in this, excuse me, in this community. So these are just a few things that we really need to focus our attention on pretty immediately and start putting some process and procedures and policies in place that will keep us from not making some of the same mistakes that we have made in the past and to really move us forward so that it's not all about dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but what are our students getting day-to-day in the classroom? How are they growing? You know, how are we evaluating? Are they, are there students with learning disabilities and they're stuck in, in that disability category for their entire educational journey? We really need to start focusing that, and that's around instruction and student achievement. The next slide here is one, uh, this is the moving forward pa- phase where I am asking the Board of Education to allow the reallocation of our current funds to add two new position titles. Those position titles are Assistant Director of Special Education and Special Education Compliance Coordinator. Um, those are titles that we currently do not have, and I have sent over the job descriptions in advance to the board. Uh, but again, this is reallocation of funds. We're not asking for additional, um, funds at this time. And so what I did is I took that, those position titles, and I re-looked at those areas of improvement and wanted to give you an idea of where the improvement areas that could be focused around these specific positions. There is some overlap here, but there clearly needs to be someone focused on compliance, that that is what they do. They supervise our clerks who are responsible for uploading all of our data to the state. They're really focused on compliance. And also working with me to move us forward to building and rebuilding the trust in our community with our families. I have learned over these 46 days is we have some work to do. Just to be very transparent, we have to improve on our communications with our families. We have to empower our families. They have to understand their rights. But we also have to be ready to make sure that we're doing our part with providing the instruction that they need, making sure that the IEPs are compliant and that we really are doing what we say we're doing. And I really need some additional support in leadership to really make this happen. And so I am proposing, and I am asking for the board to approve the reallocation of our current sped funds to add these two positions to our department.
Thank you, um, Dr. Jackie for making, um, Dekeeta, I'm sorry, for making the proposal. I think it's very important that, um, you link the information to our strategic plans as well as the need for these two positions. So with that, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve the Assistant Director of Special Education and the Assistant Special Education Compliance Coordinator by reallocating current funds that we currently have, um, in this sped department.
I second it.
Motion and a second on the floor. I would open it up for questions or discussion from other board members.
This is Yolanda, and so I have a question. I, um, I'm just curious, a lot of times when you walk into new spaces, you spend 60, 60 days a year before you make major changes. And so you sound very confident that this is the step that we need to take. I'm curious on why that is.
Just review, just looking at just the paperwork and what we've been, um, providing, that was, um, that was something that we really need to focus on. How we're writing our, our, what we call PWNs, which is our legal contract with families, um, how we're writing that, the language that we're using, the inconsistencies across the system in special education that we're using. These are things that could have much greater implications to our department and to our system if we are not really focused on making some of these changes. And so that is, that has a lot to do with it because those things are things that are, matter to our parents. And our parents, um, they are becoming more knowledgeable and they need to be empowered so they can know how to advocate for what their kids need. But we have to be ready to receive that. So we have to make sure that we are doing all that we can to make sure, at least on the compliance side, that we're doing right. But then we have to take it to the next level and say, okay, day-to-day in the classroom, remote or in person, how does this paperwork translate to the day-to-day services? So I spoke with many, many individuals in our department. They all had the same concerns. And when the information is consistent across various members, um, and not even just in the Special Education Department, but outside, building principals, other departments with our system, when that information and that caution is out there, that tells me these are areas that we need to move on and we need to move on quickly to make these changes.
Okay, and I just have one more follow-up question. And excuse me, I don't, I don't know your field like you know your field. Um, I'm hearing you say two positions. Why two versus starting out with one?
Well, there are two different positions. Right now, the coordinator position is a must. We've had some situations within our, our department where we have to answer to the state right now. And one of the things, a part of that action plan, is we have to have someone that's a supervisor in compliance period. Um, that is something that we have to do to be, um, you know, in compliance with the state is what now they're, they're requesting because there have been some implications that have taken place prior to my arrival. And we're going to have to deal with that for a little bit longer. And it's important to put that position in place to make sure that that doesn't be, that's not repeated. But then there's so many other factors, like the instructional side, that we need to have more oversight on. We just haven't had a chance and had the personnel at the leadership level along with me to really carry out those duties. And that's why we need those. I mean, we actually need more, but what we have right now, um, I believe that I can work with these two new positions and really get us moving forward. And then we could reassess and reevaluate where, where else do we need to make changes um, to improve our services to special education students altogether. Uh, we're talking 4,600 students, over 4,600 students, about 500, 600 staff members that have to be a part of this work. And we really do need additional leadership positions, like the Assistant Director to work with me, like a compliance coordinator that is going to focus on that to really make sure that all 4,600 students are being served and served appropriately. Um, and so that is why I'm presenting two positions at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I realize some of it you repeated for me. I needed that for you to repeat, so I do appreciate that.
No problem, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Laurie, I'm sorry, I lost connection, so you may have answered these.
Okay.
Uh, where, do, have we seen the job descriptions? Did you say you gave them to us?
I did present those job descriptions in advance. I sent it to Ms. Smith.
They're in our board docs.
Yeah, oh, they're in our board docs. Did you, is there salary attached to them?
There is a pay range. It is not on the actual document, that is a draft document, but there is a pay range that, for both of those positions.
Okay, and who's doing this work now?
Uh, no one. I'm, I'm trying to do it all kind of as best as I can. But yeah, there's no supervisor right now over compliance. There's no one supervising the MIS clerks. Um, someone that previously did the work is kind of. Someone that previously did the work is kind of working in, so we're kind of working through that. But that is just not in place right now.
So this, neither of these positions, the jobs, none of their jobs would fall under your heading?
Many, it will fall under my heading, but there's different levels to it. We have the level of the building, then we have the state level type of responsibilities. Then we have the, the individual disability areas have their own requirements. And so there's so many factors and so many students that it requires additional leadership support to ensure that we're doing the right thing.
Okay.
This is, this is Janie Humphries. I have my question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Will this allow, we've had a big turnover in our special ed staff the last couple of years and a staff shortage, which I'm sure you're aware of, since that's your department. Will this, this be, allow you to provide more support to your staff and take some of the stress off of them?
It will, it will allow for more support because we will have more people that will be able to focus on the specific needs of these individual teachers. But right now, we've kind of been putting out fires, just trying to keep afloat with just the compliance piece that when it comes to the teachers, they need the support instructionally. They need to know, at the end of the day, I have this student in my classroom. How, how can I best serve them? We can get the paperwork right and we can make sure that's done, but how does that translate to every day? And that's what teachers are wanting support. They want consistency, they want clear communications. They want, they want guidance, they want process and policies written and in place. And currently that, a lot of that is just not in place right now.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Laurie, I have one more question, please. So how is this job being advertised?
Once this is approved, I'm going to have it posted. The HR department will post it on our district website. And we will start, you know, getting candidates in and then we'll start the, the process of interviewing. If all goes well, we will be able to hopefully make a decision before break so that we can get somebody ready to go January.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Laurie. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Page.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Thank you, because we needed this. And we've been muddling through and not really giving a hundred percent. And I appreciate you giving that because these kids need it. And we need to make sure we give them the best that we have to offer. So I truly appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you, Ms. Page. With that, Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody. And thank you, Dr. Laurie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Laurie.
All right, moving on with our agenda. Dr. Miguel.
Thank you so much, Dr. Laurie, and thank you, board. The next item that we have is to accept as an information item, an update on the strategic plan, strategic theme one, initiative 3A, as submitted by Mr. Lincoln, Chief of Staff, and presented by Brittany Tally.
Brittany? Yes, hello. Hello, President Lopez, board members and Dr. Miguel. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. I'm excited to share with you some of the work that our initiative team has been doing this semester. So this is just an overview of our strategic plan framework. If you remember the four themes, I'm going to be talking specifically about theme one, which is aligning social emotional supports focused on the whole child, specifically Phase One and Initiative 3A. So develop, enhance and sustain trauma-sensitive and resilient school teams to identify and address staff secondary trauma. So we're focused on our employees for this initiative. So we're really hoping that our policies, practices and procedures will align with the SEL framework and allow for a decrease in staff turnover and increase sustainability and longevity by combating burnout, exhaustion and compassion fatigue in all staff. And some of the key deliverables for this particular initiative are trainings. We hope to develop at least two trainings for leadership and for all employees. And then the completion date is just that we will be continually providing that sort of professional development and other things as well. So we have been working at every school as part of my main role as the trauma-sensitive coordinator to form trauma-sensitive and resilient schools teams. So every school in the Washington, Yandau and Schlegel clusters currently has a team. Usually the teams are five to 10 people and include the principal, maybe assistant principals, instructional folks, some classroom teachers. And then the Harmon Cluster, Sumner and Early Childhood Centers will begin that work this coming spring of 2021. While they will complete trainings and develop teams of their own. So by June of 2021, every school in the district should have a trauma-sensitive team at their site. We are also partnering with our wellness coordinator, Stephanie Ferris from C-Biz, and she's been having conversations with her colleagues in HR about creating a wellness coordinator position. And that would be a stipend paid through Blue Cross Blue Shield through their wellness funds so that they would be part of the trauma-sensitive team and their real focus would be on employee wellness at each site. So she's working on that and they're going to continue talking about that in January. I know they've had brief conversations and they're still working for, toward that. We are waiting for the NEA survey to be sent out and returned to us so that we can start analyzing some of the responses from that to develop a leadership training for building and district leadership around workload, staff advocacy, how to prioritize the needs of the buildings in the district. So we're working on that and hopefully that will produce some really rich data for us to look at. We added some employee satisfaction questions to that particular survey. We also already have asked on that survey about like safety. Is this a positive climate and culture? Those kinds of things are already included. We just added a few more employee satisfaction, like how would you rate your satisfaction at your job? Those kinds of things. And we also have a few things that were not on our initial work plan for our initiative, but because we are all virtual, we're trying to reach staff as best we can this semester. So we've added a few things. One is something called Trauma Sensitive Tuesdays. And so those are hosted by myself and then our social emotional coordinator, Tracy Chauvin. And we alternate between like a content or skills-based session and a self-care session. So we do them every other Tuesday. And if you're interested in attending, please let me know. I'm happy to invite you to those and their virtual sessions. So we've done restorative practices, engaging remote learners, and then we've done some self-care with our community partners at Turning Point. And then right before Thanksgiving, we did a session on setting boundaries because it's the holidays and we all need help with that this time of year. Also, our partners at C-Biz have been increasing, right, the type of offerings they're providing for our employees, including something called financial pathways, which is all about financial wellness. And then they're doing another round of those. Sharita just sent an email today, which is very exciting. And then something called Reawaken Resilience. And over 200 staff signed up to participate in this, I think it was four-week course, provided through Reawaken Resilience. So there's a lot of employee wellness offerings going on right now, which are really exciting. And I think it's, I think it speaks to the commitment of this initiative team and to the whole district that we're able to really focus on what our staff's immediate needs are and still provide those things virtually. Just some artifacts of the work. There's the advertisement for Trauma Sensitive Tuesday. And then one of our deliverables was creating maybe some board policy language. And so this is a draft of what that might look like. And we also, I could show you some of the NEA survey. And we have begun to vet something called STAT, which is an online training around secondary traumatic stress for, specifically for teachers. Would you want to see either of those things today?
Yes, I think it would be great to see it.
Yeah. So I will start, oh, it's going to cooperate with me. Oh, it might not today. My bad.
I think you have to click Ctrl, click.
Yes. Now it's giving me that. Give me a second, I'll pull it up real quick. My bad. So I feel like I'm going to copy there. Okay. So here's the STAT program. And so I'm still logged in, so you'll be able to look at it. So it's not super thrilling, I will say that. So that's why we're just, my whole team is looking through this, vetting it. And so it has videos and quizzes and things like that for staff. And it talks, it, one of the things I like about it is it really helps them develop their own plan for managing their secondary traumatic stress. It's not just information. So they want you to think about, okay, what do you need? And there's some self-assessment so that a teacher could complete this training and say, oh, I'm at high risk for burnout. Here are the things I need to do so I can get what I need, so I can stay here longer, so I can keep doing this job that I love longer. So you can see like how to use this course, what it means. And then this is the assessment piece. So I can kind of show you what that looks like.
My STAT level uses a version of a common STS questionnaire.
So I won't make you watch the whole video. But I do like how engaging it is and how sort of interactive it is even virtually. So teachers would go through and answer these questions about their experiences. And ask them more, oh, I have to answer, so it's not going to let me play around with that. So that's the STAT program. We're still going through it because we want to make sure that it's a good fit for our staff. Even though it is one of the few that's specific for teachers, which I was really excited about, I still want to make sure that it's going to be a good fit for KCK. So I'm still in the middle of it, as you can see. And hopefully by the end of this school year, well, not school year, this year, I will have finished it and I'll be able to speak more about if this is something we want to move forward with. And it's free, so that's always nice. And here is the NEA survey. So you can sort of see, we're going to break it down by school. And then we'll be able to sort of break that data apart when we get it all back. And so thanks to Dom, who has been working on this and helped us get it put together. So you can see some of the questions that we'll be asking. So here are some of those satisfaction questions that we ask.
Is this information shared with principals, administration? You're not showing names, but at least in general. And I don't know if you break it down into elementary, middle school, high school, that you could share data just to kind of let people know what some of the teachers are experiencing?
Well, and I can ask Dom about that. And I'll also check in with Jen, who was the president last year, to see sort of how they shared this data. But we plan to use it and share the information that we get with administrators and principals so that we can say like, okay, here's what's going on. We noticed that satisfaction at the district level is lower than satisfaction at the building level. So that's telling us something, right, that we need to be paying attention to. And then we plan to use that to develop a training for those leaders so that we can sort of rectify some of that.
Okay, Ms. Brownlee Page, excuse me for jumping in, Vice President Brownlee Page. This was shared last year and actually we shared some of this data during the strategic planning when we met with the community. So the KNEA is always sharing that with central office and then we're able to get that out to school administrations. We actually were able to, excuse me, share it with the community when we went out and did our, our meetings at the different campuses pre-COVID.
Okay. Yeah, any other questions about this? Before we go back to our PowerPoint? Okay.
I do have, this is Yolanda, I'm sorry, I do have, and I know I realize this is separate. I found the question to be interesting that Ms. Page said when she said, is this shared? And this is separate, but to me, it kind of ties into some, kind of a state interview and I don't know what we do for the district and I'm not asking for anyone to answer that question. But it kind of reminds me too, if you take this data and you say, okay, what, what's going on? Why are people leaving or what's going on with them? To me, it's, it's deeper than a state interview, but it kind of compares in some ways to that. Is that, is that kind of what the information will be used for as well? If I do a comparison there?
I think so. If I'm understanding you correctly, I believe we would be using it to make changes, right? To think about, okay, what needs to change? And so I did meet with Dr. Knight Beck earlier this week because he, so if you saw in that big table about the strategic theme, there's like a whole theme around employees and HR. And so he and I have chatted about any overlap. At this point, there is none, but sort of what that would look like from an HR perspective.
Okay.
If I may add, Brittany, the Instructional Improvement Officers review this data with principals and they do discuss what strategies to use to address the areas of need. And also they include it in their school improvement plan.
Okay, thank you. So is it looked at from, from a building perspective? Do we, do we ever say this individual set this? We can challenge them differently and give them this? Or is it strictly used big picture for the building or for the, wherever the department?
So principals receive the data without any names because looking at numbers mainly, how many people are satisfied or dissatisfied? So that we look at what are the issues in the building? And then we also look at the district. So, so we get the individual data and the district data.
Okay, thank you. That helps me a lot. So it's not as personal as a state interview. It's, 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 yeah, okay.
I think kind of the end goal is similar, right? We want to know what's going on so we can remedy, but it's not going to be as intensive as that. And then the last thing on our artifacts is just that we have created and completed a video that walks employees through how to access our employee assistance program. So one of the things that I get asked a lot when I'm training or when I'm working with staff is, you know, how would I, if I feel like I'm being burnt out, what can I do next? What are some of the resources available? And so working with Stephanie, we made a video that walks them through how to access that EAP from home. And Sharita was kind enough to get that up on our website today. So with the help of the Communications Department, that's ready to go so that employees can use their benefits. And one of the things I explain is like, you're paying for this. It's part of your compensation, so please use our EAP. So really the only delay that we have with this particular initiative is the leadership training sort of design. So we decided to wait until we got our data back this year instead of using last year's data because this year is so very different than last year. We want to make sure we're addressing the needs of staff. And so we're going to start looking at that this month, actually, in 12, 2020. And then the delivery date is going to be pushed back to late spring or summer. And we do plan that, we've thought about what that will look like virtually and sort of where we'll be at that time. So, but we did push that back from our initial timeline. So some Um, so some roadblocks, setbacks and risks, and these are, um, these were brought to me by our initiative team and our advisory team. And so one of the big things is sort of feeling like there's difficulty communicating broadly, right? So how can we get this information up to all staff all at once? Um, without inundating them with emails, because they already get so many emails every day. And so that's one of the reasons we decided to create the brief EAP video. Um, creating sort of extra communication outside of those emails. So we're still brainstorming what that will look like. Um, we talked about the wellness coordinator at each building being, being able to help with that. So it's not somebody from central office presenting that information, it's coming sort of locally at the building. Um, and then we also have the principal's office that gets sent out a couple of times a week from Mike Keener. And then thinking about how we work within the district to maybe restructure some committees, either uh, at the district level or at the local level at each school. Um, many schools have a leadership team already and a social committee. And so how can we use those structures we have already in place to get the communication to be more effective and efficient? Um, again, part of that is we push back our timeline on that and the training date to make sure that we can address sort of those immediate needs of staff. I mentioned that inundation, and that's going to keep coming up when I talk about our roadblocks and setbacks. Um, teachers are overwhelmed, so with emails and tasks and new curriculum and all of that good stuff, which is not different than any other year. Teachers are always asked to do a lot. Um, but I think this year it's been especially difficult, right? With all the other things that are going on. And so really for our team, it was about, okay, how do we slow down on our asks of staff and think about what they need, um, sort of empowering them by giving them what they need. And again, that is slowing down some of the work that we're doing, because we're adding other things that um, meet the more immediate needs of our staff. Um, one thing that we got feedback on was that the priorities are not clear or organized. So people feel like everything is the number one priority. Um, and that's hard, because that's impossible. That's what a priority is. It means something's more important than another. And if everything feels like it's the most important, how do you choose what to work on and get done first? Um, so that's part of why we want to keep working towards that leadership training. So we can help our leaders and our principals think about how they convey priorities, right? How do we help people structure things so they can actually get things done? Um, and sort of the same thing, so that's pushing back our timeline, because we want good data from this year. Um, at the time we wrote this, it was grades. And so some of our feedback from our teachers, principals, um, and school staff was it's grading time, so it's hard to get anything else done right now. Um, so I told them I would include that as part of the roadblock. Obviously, they still have to do grades and they know that, um, but I didn't want to include um, their language. Again, that's about priorities, right? If grades are number one, let's get that done, and how do we move other things off the plate? And then also, we are living in a global pandemic and um, we can't ignore that. It was also election time when we made this, so that was very stressful for a lot of folks. So that means we're working virtually, being really creative about how we engage staff, how we keep them engaged in the work that we're doing. Um, and again, prioritizing our requests, so we're not overloading um, our staff and our teachers. So again, slowing down that timeline before I ask them to attend another training. Um, and pushing that back to the spring, so. So some specific asks, really, um, just the organi- organization, timing of district priorities. Um, and then again, this ties back to that training leadership that uses like effective language to change that climate and culture. So what does that really look like for a leader? Um, and I don't know that I have the perfect answer for that yet. We're hoping to find that out soon. Um, and then is the human capital that we're expending on new initiatives, right? Giving us the return that we're looking for. So, um, and that goes for everyone, even the work that I do. So is the work that we're doing for trauma-sensitive and resilient schools providing us, right, with that return that we're hoping to see? Um, and making it worth our time. And then um, what can come off the plate, right? What would fill up our staff and make them feel really valuable, and what could the district do? And so um, I know Lisa Walker's doing a staff survey, and that's something we want to ask our teachers on the NEA survey as well. Like, if we could take something off your plate, what would it be, right? And obviously, can't promise that we can actually do those things, but I'm really interested to see what they're saying is not a good use of their time. And see if there's any patterns in there. So just some upcoming milestones before I, we'll see you again probably later this school year. Um, we're working on this month, getting that leadership training started. Um, the closing date on that NEA survey is January, so we're going to start now and hopefully get it all wrapped up by March. Um, the STS training rollout, which will be that secondary traumatic stress, possibly the stat program I showed you. Will be summer twenty twenty one, and then um, the EAP wellness video went out today, so that's all done. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Tally, Mr. Linkus, for the work you put in. Any questions for board members? I think this is really important to continue to get updates on, so appreciate the time um, that you put into this and continue to put into this and, and the rest of our staff. So any other questions from board members?
Well, I think this was very, very informative. Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
And I want to add, um, next steps for us as a team is to um, get together with Brittany and, and her team. Review all of this data and discuss what are some action steps. One thing I want to highlight is the question of um, what, what can we get off our plate? Is a question that we ask often, and people um, sometimes struggle to identify what they can stop doing. And even at times when they do identify, and I think that that's true for all of us, not just teachers and principals. Even when we name it, it's still hard to let go of things. So that's, that's a work in progress. But, but thank you, Brittany, for all of the data and the thorough information and, and next immediate steps is now, now what do we do with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel and Ms. Tally. Before we continue on to, with the next agenda item, um, I know we've been going for a couple hours, so I just want to check in. Um, do we need a quick break or folks find out, continue moving forward? You have some break? All right, let's give everybody a quick break, stretch your legs, grab some water, do what you need. Um, five minute break, it's nine twenty, come back at nine twenty-five. Thanks, everybody.
It's seven twenty.
Seven twenty.
Please come back at seven twenty-five, not at nine twenty-five.
I don't know where I got nine o'clock, y'all. My apologies.
Oh, you want to go to nine? Let's make it twelve.
My apologies. I was just making sure people were paying attention. Y'all know how my clock, clock skills are.
It's funny, because I thought he's just testing to see we're listening.
I thought you were looking at military time, and you saw that nineteen, and then you said, we forgot the one.
That's right.
Right, but we were like, no way are we coming back that late.
All right, I want to make sure all our board members are back. I know uh, I heard Ms. Page, it sounded like. Yeah, Dr. Wayne, okay, perfect. Thank Ms. Drew. Zach Fieger's there, Ms. Humphreys. Alrighty, we are all back. Hey, thanks, everybody, for uh, letting us stretch our legs and, and getting a quick break in there. So we are back, um, and we will continue on with our agenda, Dr. Miguel.
So the next item is an update on the school reentry. Um, and, and this is an informational item. So I'm going to invite Mr. Anderson to join us with that presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can see my screen um, with the presentation. Um, just good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Page, board members and Dr. Miguel. Tonight, it's my pleasure to provide you with an update on school reentry. We understand how important it is to keep you informed about the process of reentry and appreciate your willingness to review all of the updated versions of this presentation that were shared with you. Um, we shared with you on Friday, November twentieth, November twenty-fourth, and then yesterday, November thirtieth. As you all are aware, things are changing so quickly, and we've been making updates to the presentation to provide you with the most timely information that we have. So tonight, you'll have an opportunity to hear from representatives from the Wyandotte County Health Department to discuss the COVID numbers in Wyandotte County, as well as what we can do as a community to help slow the spread. You'll also be hearing from our health services coordinator here in the district to provide you with information about the COVID cases within the district. As well as where we are with staffing nurses. Our HR department will also be sharing how many accommodation requests we've received from our employees. And as you know, we have asked um, that parents and guardians make a determination of how they will enroll their students when we return. Either in person for hybrid learning, or if they would like to remain remote. Tonight, you'll get an update on our most recent numbers, as well as our plans to get more of those forms submitted from our families. And finally, our operations team will also be sharing some of the issues that they're facing currently with employee absences and the impact it's having on the work that they do in the district. Although this is an informational update to the board about reentry, we will be making some recommendations on reentry that will require board approval. And that we hope that this information that we provide tonight beforehand can help you, support you with making the best decision. Either tonight, or possibly at our upcoming board meeting on December fifteenth. So I'm going to go ahead and get us started. As a reminder, uh, the Board of Education determined that the, that KCKPS would use the KSDE gating criteria to help guide their decision-making on school reentry. Although this is a helpful tool, this is not the be-all and-all, and that the board has the ability to make whatever decision possi- or whatever decision is the best that supports our staff and our families and our students in the district. So this section that you're seeing here of the gating criteria shows the numbers that constitute the color-coded levels. And red is where we indicate that we are in um, at high levels of either positivity rates, community gating uh, criteria. Um, and so forth. And so when you're in the red, it impacts the sections of the learning um, that happen within a district. And so what you're seeing here is the KC, or the KSDE recommendations for when um, a county is in the red on the other gating criteria. So when we're in red, school activities are remote, spectator audiences are remote, visitor access is none. And then playgrounds are closed. And so that is the guidance that they provide. But again, it's just guidance, the board can make the decision that's necessary for our families and our students here in the district. So I hope they're still with us. I know that um, we gave them a time, but uh, it went a little longer than we thought. But I would really like to introduce Dr. Erin Corvo, the Deputy Health Officer. Um, and Elizabeth Gronway, the Chief Epidemiologist for the United Government of Wyandotte County. To share where the county is with their COVID positivity rates, as well as share a message about um, what the community can do on how we can continue to help slow the spread of this virus. So if they're with us, I'd ask that they um, unmute and talk to us about where we are.
Matt, I don't think they are with us any longer. I think we um, did not estimate the time very well. So I'm going to keep an eye um, to see, I think um, Elizabeth, Ms. Um, Gronway is um, planning to come back, but I keep an eye out and let you know if, if she does, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Miguel. Um, as we continue though, I will show you the numbers. This is what is actually currently on the um, Wyandotte County COVID um, hub. And I think Elizabeth uh, Morris, our health coordinator, is actually on the call right now. And so she can kind of explain these numbers too. And then when um, uh, Dr. Elizabeth Greenway or Groenway and Dr. Corvo could come back on, we can hear from them as well. So Elizabeth, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Um, good afternoon or good evening. Um, I can give you a little bit of an um, uh, uh, explanation about this uh, scorecard that you see in front of you. Um, this is what's listed on the Wyandotte County COVID hub, and it gives us a snapshot of the seven-day rolling average of um, the trends that are happening when, within the county. And this is reflective of November sixteenth through November twenty-second. And so obviously, things have changed since then. Um, but I think um, Dr. Corvo and um, Elizabeth Gronway can probably, hopefully they'll be able to join us and give us a little bit more updated information um, regarding where we are right now. But according to the seven-day average, um, for that week, that's reflected, um, they were seeing about a hundred and eighteen positive cases daily. Um, and the percent positivity was at thirty-two percent. Um, they were also showing that testing turnaround time was taking um, around twenty-six hours. And I'll tell you, about a month ago, we were closer to um, eighteen to twenty-four hours of turnaround. Um, our staff members were getting results back very quickly, and now that um, testing turnaround time is taking much longer. They are estimating it to be around um, two to four days now, and that's because of the next box that you see, which shows that the county is averaging about seven hundred and twenty. Um, uh, testing, uh, people who are presenting for testing within the county. I know that um, as of this morning, um, they tested, or I'm sorry, yesterday, um, they had four hundred and fifty people who tested just at the health department alone. And they reported out that twenty-six percent of the people that tested yesterday did come back um, positive. Um, the last box there just reflects um, the trends reflected from the Mid-America Regional Council, which is the organization um, that manages emergency response here in the KC metro. Um, again, two weeks ago, they were reporting a hundred and sixty-two um, average daily hospitalizations across all the hospitals in the county. Um, but I can tell you, based on the KU med update this morning, um, they had a hundred and fifty-nine patients that were hospitalized due to COVID. A hundred and one of those were in the um, ten-day isolation um, or contagious period, um, with fifty-eight in the recovery phase. Um, but again, that is um, a hundred and fifty-nine, and that's the um, probably the highest number that they've ever reported out. Um, this slide here um, gives kind of a picture of what um, I was seeing, what our nurses were experiencing here. Um, as far as staff case investigations for the month of November. Um, so I broke it down by week to give you guys kind of a picture of what um, we are seeing um, for in, in staff. Um, so that first week of November, we did have fifty-four um, different staff members who had reached out due to having um, been exposed or having symptoms, and so they called in sick to work, um, or who themselves had already tested positive. And so you can see that we had seventeen out of that fifty-four um, come back being positive in that first week. The second week, it was twenty people out of a total of forty-nine. The third week, um, seventeen again, out of eighty-two. Um, or I'm sorry, out of ninety-nine. And so um, we saw um, a more significant number of um, staff exposures that week, um, due to positive um, cases or people that were symptomatic, um, and then later tested positive. Um, you can see that a, across those three weeks, the number seems to be about stable. You know, we had seventeen and then twenty and then seventeen. Um, but if you look at last week, which we know was a shortened work week, um, that reports out um, eleven twenty-two through the twenty-fourth is Sunday through Tuesday. Um, and I don't usually speak to people on Sunday, so these were um, conversations that were had on Monday and Tuesday alone. And just in those two days, we had sixteen out of twenty-six staff members um, who did uh, report back being positive. Um, there's additional cases that have come in, obviously, since that time. Um, and, and that's, that adds, um, you know, kind of reflects back on uh, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of last week. Um, so that, that's kind of um, what it looked like for the month of November. Um, I found it interesting when I added up the numbers that out of the two hundred and twenty-eight contacts that occurred between November first and November twenty-fourth. Um, seventy percent, or I'm sorry, seventy of those um, did test positive, and that was um, thirty percent, which is um, just right on target with what the county is seeing as well.
Elizabeth, we're going to have um, Lenora Miller just uh, briefly about what do we do as a district when it comes to cleaning? Um, when we do have positive cases in our buildings, and we wanted to address that, because we know that that was a question that the board had. So, uh, Lenora, would you be able to answer that question?
Absolutely. Yes, we have a communication thread that is, we have actually perfected uh, since the beginning of the pandemic to involve our nurses, to involve our employees, to involve our HR staff, to involve our leave staff, and then at the end of the day, or the end of the moment, we involve our custodial leadership. And when we learn of a positive case, each particular event can uh, dictate a certain method of response. For common response, we do have designated staff that go in and clean and just affect the area that is defined as the exposure area or common threads or pathways or areas. And that would prob- primarily be the custodians and/or accom- And that would probably primarily be the custodians and/or accommodation of custodians and nutritional services staff if the event is in a kitchen area or where we're preparing meals. The length of the time that the area would be closed is kind of dependent on the location, the specific situation, and the need to utilize that area. For example, if we could close off that kitchen or those areas for 24 to 72 hours, we do that first. If it's a specific area where we need to typically respond right away, where there's no employees in there, maybe it's overnight or early morning or in the evening, once we are communicated that there is an issue, we would go in time-sensitive times to disinfect. We typically don't like to keep an area closed, but we also don't like to disturb the area for 24 hours if we can.
Thank you, Lenora.
You're welcome.
That was, well, able to answer the question from the board. So we're going to move on here, and Elizabeth, you'll talk to us about where we are with our nurse staffing.
So of course, because we're in a pandemic, nurse staffing is of great importance right now. And as the medical community is experiencing staffing concerns across the board, we are also feeling those here within the school district. So as of right now, there are 45 school buildings that require a nurse to be present. And of those, we have 23 nurses who have indicated that they do not require any accommodations, and they are able to staff in full-time. We do have nine open positions. We have seven staff members who have requested some version of a part-time accommodation. For some, that's only, they're only able to work one day a week. Some are able to work up to four days a week. But that's also kind of a symptom of where everyone is in as far as education. And many of our staff members have children who are also attending school remotely. And so they have had to request some part-time accommodations to accommodate their own children's learning needs. We have three who are out on a temporary FMLA that we don't foresee to be something that would last to the end of the school year. And then we have three who have requested a COVID or a health-related FMLA. In our last board meeting, there were some questions about our ability to staff some of our positions and use licensed practical nurses if possible. And so I did want to bring back to you some information regarding the Kansas State Board of Nursing Nurse Practice Act, which states that for this, this is specific to a school setting. Each registered professional nurse in a school setting shall be responsible for the nature and quality of all nursing care that a student is given under the direction of the nurse in the school setting. Assessment of the nursing needs, the plan of nursing action, implementation of that plan, the evaluation of that plan, those are all considered essential components of professional nursing practice and is the responsibility of the registered professional nurse.
Ms. Morris, this is Dr. Nguyen. For those nine vacancies, do you have applications that have been made for some of those nine positions?
We have had applications, you know, since the beginning of the school year. We've had a lot of those nurses who came to us were brand-new or very limited experienced registered nurses. And it's very difficult to be a grad nurse or a new nurse and move into a school, a school setting without a strong clinical background, especially because they're going to be working independently. And so we did have, like I said, several nurses that applied in that situation. We did have some that we were willing to offer positions to. And they came back during the interview process and indicated that they felt like entering school nursing at this time during a pandemic was not where they wanted to go in their career. So we have had several that have backed out of interviews.
That's interesting, because I've been in communication, I think I've shared this with you, as well as Ms. Tushman, that there have, I've been communicating with a couple of registered nurses currently working at hospitals that had previously worked at the district on a grant. And that I'm, I will follow up to see the response that, if they receive a response from HR, and I'm, I'll share that with you now because that's not my understanding as to how they were, the response they received. So thank you for that information.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. I would welcome having that information and be very willing to follow up with them if that somehow just hasn't made it to me.
I've given Ms. Tushman a couple of names, so she has had them for at least two or three months now.
Oh, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. And my concern is nationwide, there's a problem with the hospitals trying to find nurses. We're trying to find nurses. So if we have seven openings, and my concern is, I don't want the secretary to end up to be the nurse. That's not fair to them. And that has happened at some of our schools. We advertise that we're going to provide this, and this is our plan. And we got secretaries being nurses, and that has happened, and it shouldn't happen. So how are we going to replace or make sure when the kids do come back, who's going to be there to do this? We said in our reentry plan, the nurses are checking the temperature, they're doing this. How do we fill those gaps?
In the past, we have always reached out to the staffing agencies that have been able to provide subs, daily subs or long-term subs, and that's how we've staffed our buildings in the past. We have added four additional nurses to our staff to help fill those vacancies in the meantime. Again, when I came on at the end of the last school year, we did have six full-time agency nurses that were covering for vacancies. So we are, we are up in the number of vacancies that we have. But we did end the last school year with six. So we're, I mean, we are up, but we're not too much, we don't have that too many more vacancies than what we have had in the past.
Okay, but the only difference, we're going through COVID. It's a little different. And in our reentry plan, Matt helped me, nurse is supposed to help take the temperature, do this, do that. And it can't be, you gotta have some continuity of care, where there's a consistent person, because if this person's coming in and this person's going out, how do you have that continuity of care?
Yeah, we have reached out to our staffing agencies to let them know we're not interested in daily subs right now. We are looking for people who are willing to commit to a long-term contract and finish out the school year with us. And so that's, that's the four that we have obtained are people that have committed to finishing out the school year with us.
Okay, that's four. So are we working on getting the other, you said there was nine openings? So the other five?
So we did actually just have a new one today. So we were at three. Today, we had an additional nurse. And so our agency is working to, you know, send us new candidates and get them started quickly.
Because that's my concern. I don't want the secretary to be the nurse.
And I agree.
Pay for that. And that did happen, sweetheart. Now, you just came in last year, right?
Yes, I've been here since the end of February.
Okay, but it has happened. We don't want that to happen, and it's COVID. So we need to be real concerned and make sure that everything we're saying on paper for reentry, it's actually happening. And the temperature gauges, are they working? Some people have said they're not working consistently.
Is it possible for us to get some of these questions and accusations, maybe, I'm sorry, questions and concerns maybe documented and have them follow back up with us so that we are not catching them off guard?
I'm not catching, I've already asked these questions before. Didn't bring this up. No, be fair. I've asked this before. You can call it whatever you want to call it. That's your job. You should be able to answer the question. I've asked them before.
So I'm asking Randy, is it possible for us to get a list of questions, so it's not just fired off at them question after question? I'm not sure if you're feeling the pressure like I'm feeling, but that's a concern I have, Randy.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up. I mean, I think we want to, you know, and sometimes some of these questions, these questions, some of these questions have been asked previously, and then presentations will prompt new questions, which is, which is okay. But, but we will keep track of these questions and make sure that we get a proper response to everyone. You know, I know Ms. Morris and Mr. Anderson and the rest of the team are working hard and things change. And so, you know, we will make sure we get these questions answered. And if we can't answer them tonight, I know sometimes questions come up that cannot, you know, cannot be answered, and that's okay. But we'll take note of them and grab those answers.
And Mr. Lopez, I don't mean any harm. When I worked, and I worked for 30 years in the district, people ask me questions, I answer them. I didn't call you out your name. You may not like what I asked. But if that's your job, and that's what you're getting paid to do, then we need to do our job.
I agree. I agree, Ms. Page. I think we're all trying to, you know, and I know there's, you know, there are shortages. I don't think, this is a stressful time for all of us. And so I just, you know, I want to respect that. And, you know, I don't have any problems with the questions you're asking, and I don't think any of our staff do. We're all trying to work through this. It is a stressful time for all of us. And so we're all doing the best we can. And I think the questions that board members ask do, are good because they, they make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep our students and staff safe. So I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't see any, any issue with, with questions. But I do want to make sure that our staff have the appropriate time to give the answers and, or find answers if they don't have them right away. So I hear, I hear y'all.
Just to clarify, I, as you well know, you know, we take notes during the board meeting. We're taking notes of all of these questions. I agree, Ms. Page, these are questions that you have asked, and we have discussed them almost on a daily basis. We are discussing different scenarios in the event that it comes time to open schools, and we still don't have nurses, because we are really trying every possible scenario. So and one thing I know about Ms. Morris is she's very cautious about sharing with you what, what is solid in our plans. So there are lots of conversations that we're having and lots of what if we did this and hypotheticals that we're, we're not ready to share. But just to reassure you, Ms. Page, these questions, and we appreciate that you keep asking them because we need to find a solution. So for sure, keep asking. Just know that we are discussing them every day and looking at every possible way to, to come up with the answers and to share them with you as we have them.
Is one of the reasons why we were giving this information to you now, because we want you to have all of this information prior to making a decision. And so all, all of these factors may help you decide which way to go. If we, you know, our goal for our plan is that every building would have a nurse. Yes, we don't want our secretaries to have to be the nurses of the buildings, absolutely not. You know, safety is our number one priority for our staff and our students. And so if that is a factor that will cause us to, you know, make some decisions, then that's what we have to do. But we just wanted you to be aware of where we are with our numbers moving forward. Before we move on to HR, I just wanted to check if Dr. Corvo or Elizabeth Gronway were able to join us again.
No, I don't see them, Matt. I keep an eye out, and even if it's toward the end, I'll have them share.
No worries. I just want to make sure that if they come back on, that we give them that opportunity to share kind of what's happening in Wyandotte County, since that is where we serve our families and our students. And I just want to make sure that we have that available to them. So we're going to move on to our human resources. And Ms. Jody Mitchell, Director of HR, is going to discuss with us what we're receiving at a district level as it relates to employee accommodation requests.
Again, yes, I'm here to talk about our accommodation requests. And this information that you see on the screen is specific to teachers. So it gives kind of a breakdown of what we've had to date from July to current. And as you can see, obviously, November is the peak. We did, we did ask teachers to, if they could provide us their accommodation requests by, you know, a certain date that, that that would help us with staffing. And so we did anticipate that we would have a lot of requests for November. But as you can see, 143 accommodation requests from teachers, and then a breakdown of where the requests are coming from. We did check in today. We have had two additional requests since the 20th date. One of them in middle school and one of them in elementary. Next slide, Matt. Okay, so the accommodations that doctors are requesting, the breakdown here and what teachers are asking for is to work virtually. As you can see, 107, majority of them are asking to work virtually. The next 26% is one or more suggested, and most of those are saying, you know, I would want to do a virtual and a hybrid, for example. Or, you know, I would do a hybrid if, if the district provides childcare, for example. So we have others that are giving some additional thoughts behind that, so. And this, although very small, I think, also tells you a breakdown by school location and also by type of teacher being that's requesting. So again, you can see it, but Wyandotte High School has 22 of the teachers that are requesting accommodation. And due to the high numbers on the other slide, you can see that most of them, we would anticipate the majority of those are requesting to work from home. We also see the sped category and math, which are, of course, our, our high need ones that we have a hard time finding teachers for. Those are the majority of teachers that are requesting. So the slides I presented are mostly around teachers. But of course, we do have counselors, social workers, even principals, you know, our central office staff, others that are requesting accommodation as well. And those numbers, if you're wondering, about 103 total, what we consider non-teacher, are also requesting accommodation. So some of those obviously are employees that work in schools, and so wanted you to have that number as well.
Ms. Mitchell, this is Dr. Nguyen. Could you refrain, help me remember what is, what's the criteria for accommodation?
So if someone is requesting, requesting accommodation, they would submit a form to us. So they could request accommodation for medical reasons, if they themselves are at high risk, if they live in a, you know, a family that has high risk or is around other people, family members that are high risk. They could request for childcare needs if, you know, if their, if their child, either the daycare is closed or their children aren't back in school and they don't have a care provider, then they could request accommodation for that.
And verification is what again?
So if they are requesting for medical reasons, their doctor would have to complete a form for us. And the doctor would have to tell us, based on, you know, their condition, what would be accommodations. And we asked for three. If there's three that are available, what would be those accommodations that would, they would recommend from a medical perspective? So we've been collecting that. And if it's childcare-related, we're just asking just simple questions. There's nothing we're not asking for, you know, something from your daycare provider that says they're closed. We have so many that are medical-related that, you know, as you can see, those are the majority.
Okay, so I mean, if it's medical, of course, the, the doctor has his license to be concerned about as far as not providing any false information. But if, if, if their children are not in daycare, one would think that they would have to verify that.
We could go that route. You know, some of the, some of the students are our students, KCK students. So we know, you know, if they're, you know, kindergarten, first, second, you know, those elementary ages that they are not in school.
Okay, thank you.
So next, we'll have Ms. Lisa Garcia Stewart, our Director of Student Services, discuss where we are with collecting the enrollment forms from our families, asking for the learning mode that they would like to have for their students when we do come back to in-person learning.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, President Lopez, Board members, Dr. Miguel. Just wanted to share our updates since our last reentry meeting, our presentation. And that is that, as you heard earlier, we did provide our parents an opportunity, parents, caretakers, and our guardians, an opportunity to complete a survey that was sent out through Infinite Campus Parent Portal for them to make a decision for each child in their home. So we could vary depending on their preference for each child in their home to return in January, provided the decision of the board, if we return in January for remote learning or to return for hybrid. As of today, this afternoon, we've had sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine responses for each student. Of those responses that have been returned, we have eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two that are opting to return in person hybrid model. We have seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven have elected to continue in remote learning. Our current enrollment as of today, December first, is twenty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-four. So we do have four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five responses that we are, that are remaining. So we extended the window last week, and we know that it is important to give you as much accurate data as possible. So schools are still reaching out. They're working so hard to make sure that parents have an opportunity to complete the form. They're continuing to call Student Services. So between our department and the schools, the IIOs were making sure that we're continuing to encourage parents, if they have not yet, to conform to elect hybrid to return in January or with remote learning. Again, our TIS, our ESL department have all been very supportive to remove the language barrier, technology issues. And we've continued to accept forms even as of today. From yesterday through today, we've had five hundred more responses. So we want to continue to make sure that we're providing and gathering all the information we need to, from our families.
So now we'll have Lenora Miller speak again, and she's going to share some updates on some of the challenges that our operations teams are facing currently and how it's impacting the work that they're trying to do to help us reopen schools and to serve our students during remote learning.
Thank you, Matt. So the operations team, beginning this school year, was highly impacted because we were in remote learning. We came up with some creative ideas how to keep all of our employee groups in a working fashion. So kudos to the nutritional service team, the transportation team, our shop trades, our custodians, and even our TIS, and the police department, actually. Were doing roles that were outside of their regular job description. And our priorities were safe buildings to enter, clean and sanitized buildings. Meals was a high priority, and then, of course, taking care of our staff to keep them safe. And so what we're finding today, the snapshot that we've been experiencing these last couple of weeks, is the entire support team that I represent is experiencing up to a hundred and sixty absences a day, which is really truly impacting our priorities. The first priority is to feel, to feed our families. And because we're having to pull from other departments for emergency last minute coverage, for whatever leave reason these people are out on, it's been very challenging. And we can spend, not only myself, but a lot of other brains in the room, up to three hours just trying to figure out, okay, how are we going to get this meal site covered today? We cannot close it. What we're finding is now that support structure is experiencing their own staff coverage issues due to high rates, rates of absenteeism. As a sad result, we're going to have to consolidate some of our meal sites. And we will be communicating that out to our families. And we will also begin reviewing potential additional meal deliveries opportunities as opposed to congregating at sites. So later, I will be providing you some numbers on what those meals that we've been providing later on in the presentation. But we wanted to let you know that we are experiencing some huge challenges. And I think it's a result that most of our classified operational employees live in our community. So it's, it's absolutely sliding over into our employees. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Lenora. So we know that this will not be an easy decision to make. However, we wanted to provide you with some information that was just shared to help make a more informed decision for our staff and student reentry. As a leadership team, to support you in this decision, we thought it would be helpful for us to propose some possible recommendations for reentry moving forward. And so per the KSDE gating criteria, as kind of our foundation for guidance, we have three options. Option A would be approve postponing the January return of students for in-person learning until the end of third quarter, which would be students returning on April fifth, and then staff or instructional staff returning on March twenty-second. Some things to consider for this option. This option allows for a dedicated timeline for when staff and students can return. And by having this dedicated timeline, staff and families can properly plan ahead for the decision that's made. Option B is to approve postponing the January return of instructional staff and students for in-person learning until COVID nineteen positivity rates decrease. And in parentheses, you see that that number is less than fifteen percent. So that would be that positivity rate that's currently sitting at thirty-two percent. With that model or with that option, once we know that the numbers are down to under the fifteen percent, we could do a two-week notification to get our instructional staff back into the buildings and to allow for that classroom and building transition time. We would then go another two weeks, so approximately four weeks from that time, to allow for the phasing back in of students and do a similar phase in how we did with the January, where we started with EC through, early childhood through second, and then we would do our third through fifth, middle, and then high school. Considerations for this plan. This plan allows for more flexibility for an early return of staff and students based on if the number of COVID cases decrease. We've added the recommended KSDE gating criteria number under fifteen percent as our goal for return, knowing that that's what the, the state would recommend. The issue with this plan is that it doesn't allow for as much time for families and staff to plan for the transition. And so that's just one of the issues that comes up on that option. Option C is to continue to move forward with the decision that the board made in October, which would be to return in January. This, some considerations for this, it would be the earliest possible return that we could have for our students and staff. Based on the current numbers in Wyandotte County at thirty-two percent positivity rate and within the district at about thirty percent, there's still a concern that the positivity rate will not be at the level that the board would deem to be it's safe for a return. One thing to consider is we have been working with the Wyandotte County Health Department on a weekly basis, and they have been working with a couple of local laboratories in the metropolitan area to provide COVID surveillance testing for all school sites in Wyandotte County. And so staff and students would have access for early detection, and then also it would help with contact tracing. It is not nasal pharyngeal testing. It is an actual saliva test that they would be given. And so we would work with the Wyandotte County Health Department to help train our staff or our nurses on how to give those COVID tests. And then finally, we would need to know as soon as possible if this is the option you'd like to go with, to ensure that everything is ready to go for our January fourth return for teachers and then a mid-January return for our students. Just a reminder that any approval of these options would not, I'm going to repeat, would not impact the continuation to provide services, those in-person services, to our students with those highest needs. So our students that are in the sales and steps classrooms, as well as those students that are receiving ESL services for in-person learning. So I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to allow for discussion and questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Board members, questions?
This is Dr. Nguyen. When will we, or, Dr. Miguel, when do we receive any reports of student achievement for first, actually semester, now that we have been total remote?
We should be getting some data in soon from the interim assessments and from FastBridge. So we'll have some data to share with the board soon.
Run a report on our grades as well.
Right, and, and grades is something that we've been monitoring and discussing and as well as attendance and, and student engagement.
So will we have some of this data before the end of December?
We can have this to you next, at our next board meeting.
All right, because, I mean, we, for me, I need, it would, first positivity rate is not going to go anyplace. That's, that's going to be what it is. But some type of measure of student performance, in my opinion, if we continue with either option A, B, A or B, still, what kind of follow-up correction are we, are we doing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is Dr. Yeager. Is it possible to table it to our next board meetings to get additional understanding? And the second, and the second question is, since we do have the gating criteria in place, since it is like you all mentioned, it is thirty-two percent, does that mean that we will not start school in January if the gating criteria is followed? Is that correct? But I think the key would be for us to approve it in time for us to allow for proper planning. So I'm fine with, you know, as Dr. Nguyen mentioned, getting a little more data and postponing it until our second meeting in December, so that we can give clear direction and instruction.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page. I think we need to make a decision tonight. I'm not saying we don't need the information about grades. We do. But as a parent, I don't think they need to wait to December the fifteenth because people got to get their childcare, what have you. We need to make this decision. If it's at thirty-two percent, and they're already predicting it's going to go up again. We saw what happened after Halloween. Now we're going to deal with what happened after Thanksgiving. And then wow, then some more. So it's not getting better because our behaviors haven't changed. That we need to make a decision tonight to, to, to do this and give people time to make plans, to make preparation.
Well.
That, that's just too much.
Well, then I would propose that, or make a motion that we select option B, so that we give the opportunity for the positivity rates to be decreased to fifteen percent. Because even if we get to April and it's not at fifteen percent, then we're postponing it again and again.
Well, that may be what we have to do.
Right, so that's my motion is that we choose option B until the positivity rates are decreased under fifteen percent.
And just as a reminder to the board, if you want to change that number, if you are okay with it being fifteen or slightly above, you can make that decision. We just put that as a reminder that that's the recommendation from KSDE. Again, like KSDE would say, and a lot of other districts are doing, is they have created their own gating criteria based on what KSDE has given them. And so we want you to understand, like, you can make a change to this if necessary. If, you know, we're getting closer to being at fifteen, but it's slightly above, we could still do whatever it is that the board would like to do.
This is Yolanda, and I know we have a motion on the floor, so I don't, I don't know where this conversation is okay at this point.
There is a motion on the floor. To be fair, earlier, we looked to see if there was a second.
I'm not ready to second. I have some, I have some questions.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Yeager. Ms. Clark, go ahead.
My question is, you know, I, I'm looking at these options, and I see what I would like to say, yes, this is the right thing to do. However, I'm very concerned about, so what Dr. Nguyen has, has mentioned and grades and stats, and I'm just concerned, I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about emotional stability, definitely for our staff, but I'm going to speak to our students at this point and not being visible for this amount of time. And I know parents have the option. So if we were to say, sure, let's go with option B or let's go with option A, then I, I think my questions and concerns would be, how can we go above and beyond to make sure our students are getting the services that they need to be able to be stable during this time? Because they're not visible to people. We're talking about food services being different. I'm, I'm interested in numbers and grades and where they are. So that's where I would say we pivot some of our efforts is how are we, how are we making sure that our students are getting what they need? We already struggled when we were in person every day. And so now we're taking them out of school for almost a year, and it's no one's fault, but that's where we are.
And I think the biggest struggle for me is that staff, like, you know, Wanda mentioned, staff need to know where we stand, parents need to know where we stand. As a parent, you know, we could postpone it, we could, but we would need to make, I feel we would need to make a decision in December for sure. And with the COVID rate as it is, I can't say that if in April was twenty percent, that that would give us an environment. I think if we honor that gating criteria, that would help parents to know, plan before winter break. It would help teachers to plan before break. And I agree that a wraparound approach, maybe Matt could clarify. If we make a decision tonight with that, I'll help you guys with the wraparound approach that may be needed that you would be able to provide at our next board meeting.
Yes, we can, we can continue, we're continuing to plan for ways to continue to increase the amount of, like, right now, we started with a smaller group of special education and ESOL. A next layer of our work needs to be, where are those kids that we are noticing not connecting at all? Getting them into our buildings. Another layer is to bring in the, maybe not our newcomers to the country, but those students that are our lowest level language proficiency need to come in, as well as other students with special needs. So we can continue to bring students in, keeping it limited in the amount of students we bring in, so we don't, you know, get too many people and start spreading. But that would be a possibility for us is we want to. The last thing we want to do is not provide services to our students. Dr. Miguel?
I was just going to clarify that in any of these scenarios where we bring students back, it would still be with that hybrid model of fifty percent two days a week in, in person and fifty percent remotely, right? So we, we are not still talking about bringing all kids back at once.
Dr. Miguel, I have a question. I know some districts are looking at keeping their middle and high schoolers remote, but maybe bringing back their elementary. keeping their middle and high schoolers remote, but maybe bringing back their elementary.
Right.
Because being the youngest learners, is that something you might want to bring back to us as an alternative on the 15th and maybe looking at that? Keeping our older students as remote through the third quarter, but maybe bringing back the elementary?
Yes, and that's something that we have discussed. So we could, when we come back on the 15th, especially when we bring achievement data, we could bring a modify or an option C where we continue with a decision to return in January, but just with the youngest kids and keep middle and high school remotely. And that would allow us to, to control.
And we would also have, we would have a lot more data on what's going to happen over the next 10 days to make a really good decision on whether we want to do the four weeks, the option B or the option A. And with, with the grades and stuff, I would, I, I know.
Ms. Humphries with, with the concern that we have with the number of people requesting accommodations. Because that's, you know, if, if we decide to come back in January and, and we have still the request for accommodations, we'll be struggling somewhat to, to provide some in-person services. So that would help. So we could add an option D where we modify, we propose a modification to the decision that you, that you made in October.
I, I would feel, I, I know that's putting a lot on your staff to put stuff together over the holiday break and stuff. But I, I would feel more comfortable having a little bit more information and making that decision on the 15th. That's my preference.
Anderson, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. Now, please don't forget, we just heard, I think it was Lenora Miller give the report about her staff. That's a problem. Now, we don't have the people to clean, to serve. They're getting sick. We're at 32%, and I'm not saying I don't care about the kids. I do. I'd like to see them be alive. Now, that also means we want to come up with some things for student services. We got to encourage parents, churches, everybody. But we'd like to see them be alive. And I don't think we should still keep jerking around with this. People need to know. Now, I'd like to make a motion, we accept option A. I'm not saying they can't do that other research, but we need to let people know now. I second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to go with option A. I will open it up for discussion. I, I, I will just throw in a couple of things. I, I understand, you know, given all the data that we've heard. You know, it's tough. And thinking about our staffing, you know, would, would we even have the staffing, the appropriate staffing that's, I think, what we're seeing in surrounding districts in terms of why they're having to go virtual in some cases, whether they have the substitutes necessary to, to staff classrooms. I think that, that is an issue. My concern would be regarding making a decision tonight versus the 15th is if we make a decision and then the board for, you know, decides to do something a little different on the 15th, you know, how, how would that cause any issues with, with, with our staff and our leadership if they start going down a certain road for a couple of weeks, and then if the board makes a different decision? That would be a concern, not that that would happen. But I, I also, you know, I echo, I think, you know, we, we see the data, we see the numbers in terms of our, our, our children, especially our, you know, Mindot County, our, you know, this is disproportionately affecting our low-income black and brown kids and, and, and their educational attainment. And, you know, I think our teachers are working above and beyond what, what they, they're normally doing. They're doing an amazing job. It's, you know, it's, it's just where we're at. And so I, I, I do want to say that I think our staff are working so incredibly hard, doing some of those wraparound services now. So, you know, I do know that some of that is, that a lot of that is in place. I do want to just give them their props for what they're doing. But any other thoughts, questions for the motion in a second? Ms. Drew?
One of the things that I, I look at is, back in October, we made the decision to go completely remote. Other districts chose to do something differently. We have stayed on the path with that. Have things been the way we expected them to happen? No. But we are seeing the better results of the fact that a lot of our teachers are supportive of us because we recognize that we need to keep the students out of the buildings for now. I think it's necessary for us to be able to go with option A so that parents, students, as well as other staff members and district staff workers can put something into place. If we stay on the path that we're on, I think we'll reach what we want to achieve. But when we change up the plan, it may create some other issues. As Wanda mentioned, food service. We're, we're having issues with that. There's not enough staff to be able to work. So I would suggest that we made the right decision to, to go into January. Right now, we have the numbers going up within our county. So I would suggest again that we agree to go with option A, move it until the end of April. That will give the staff enough time to work out an additional plan that maybe we can come back during the third quarter. But if we stay on the path that we're on, I think we'll have greater success. Will our numbers be where they should be? No. But we are looking at the full picture. I think in the long run, as we come out of this, we can find greater success and greater support across the board within the district. Thank you all for listening.
And this, this is Yolanda, and I'm going to sound like a broken record. I actually would be fine with option A as well. But I just, I am, I'm worried about the kids coming back. My biggest concern is where do we, where do we pivot our efforts? I'm hearing we need to shut down food service sites. I'm hearing we can't pull the kids back in school. I, I mean, I hear a lot of what we can't do, and I just need to know what we are able to do for these kids, Randy. I mean, you said it, you said it, who is impacting? And this is going to impact them mentally. It's going to impact them physically. We're going to keep seeing this cycle, and it's going to, we're going to see it for the next two, three, five years if we're not coming up with other creative ways to keep our kids engaged. And the middle school and high school kids? Sure, I'm going to say they're probably the most impacted by not being expected to walk into a door. I'm not saying they should walk into a door, but I am saying, where is their carrot? And where, where do we find their carrot to make sure they're still learning? I happen to live in a house with a 15-year-old right now, and I know my struggle, and I'm here every day, so that I can only imagine what other parents are going through. And then the expectation of not having to have their cameras on, and I know there's some rules and regulations behind that, but I also know what it feels like to talk to a bunch of blank screens. So I don't know where you are. I don't know what you're thinking. I don't know where you're learning. I don't, I just, it's so many other things that, sure, we want them to, we want them to live through COVID, but we want them to make it in life, so.
And Ms. Clark, if I may, at the next board meeting, together with achievement data, what we can bring is a couple of, we have schools that have already implemented wraparound services, and we can invite them in to share with you. I have to say, you know, that this, if there is a silver lining in, in all of this, is to see how we are getting better at this, just because we had no choice and we had to, to engage kids. And so, so we have come a long way in the services. I, I, I know you're concerned about the screens, but I was in a few classrooms today where all of the screens were blacked out, and the kids were responding like this because the teacher was calling on them, and they were giving the response, and they were working on the whiteboard. So we have made a lot of improvement in how we reach kids. But I will be very happy to bring a couple of middle schools just to address the age group that we know we are concerned about because it's easy to disengage to share with the board and with the public what they are doing to wrap those services around students.
And Dr. Miguel, so thank you, because I don't want my comments to be as if staff is not doing their job. So I'm not saying staff is not doing, doing their job. So please, please understand that. And for those kids that are there and they're answering and they, they have that motivation, that's great. But that percentage, that is not, you know, what are we, what are, and I know we can't save them all because we would have that, some of those same issues in the classroom. So I get that.
And those are exactly also the conversations that we have been having this week about now naming the kids that we haven't seen and what's our next step? Because we need to do something different. So we are all on the same page, and we'll be more than happy to bring as much data and information as you need because, like Mr. Anderson said, this is, this is a very hard decision. So we want to provide as much information as you need.
Yes.
Also, how are we incentivizing our students? So I'm going to say that too. How are we incentivizing our students to make sure that they have something you, I mean, as a kid, I've had everything taken away from me this year. I've had, last year I had my graduation. I haven't talked, we haven't talked about dances. I can't go to my school. I cannot see my friends. Then you make a vote that I still can't walk in my school. What carrot have you given? What incentive have you given me to be that student that you want me to be? So I'm done. You can tell I have some passion behind this. This is, this is bothering me. I feel like we're going to have COVID-19 kids in the professional environment in 10 years, and you're going to be able to tell it and feel it, and I don't want those to be our students.
But you're trying to teach them how to survive. This is life. We've all experienced something. And no, it's not a good feeling, but they've got to build some endurance. It starts at home, too. The school can't do everything.
But when you have a home that you're having to, when you have a home that you're having to provide services for, because home is not what home may be to others, then I get it. I, I hear what you're saying, but we also have seen those students that they depended on you, Ms. Page. When they walked in, they smiled because you were there, and you gave them that, that feeling of being in class and somebody that wanted to be there with them. And they don't have that in-person touch right now.
I hear what you're saying, but at the same token, we're going to lose, we, we're not going to have the staff. You're talking about being there. What's going to happen if they're not there? You're saying that they need to be there, but they're not going to be there.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying in-person is the thing. All I'm saying is, wraparound approach is what I'm hearing. And I, I feel, as a board member, I feel like I need to see that really, really strong.
Can I ask a question? And this is just a, a question that, sorry. Does the March 22nd date include a spring break or not include a spring break?
It, it includes the spring break.
Okay. So is that smart? I mean, some districts and colleges are saying no spring break just to make up time. If the, if the,
Yeah, I don't think.
Positivity rate is down, how, is this consistent with the, the dates that, you know, number of days and things? Have we thought through that?
The number of minutes. And so currently, what we have for the number of minutes, we meet the requirement even having a spring break. And we'd be done with school with students prior to Memorial Day.
I mean, yeah, there's no snow days, so we don't have to worry about that.
No snow days. There are some stipulations with that, so we have.
We need to make sure we do it right, though.
But absolutely, you know, if the, the rates aren't, and I may, and maybe I'm not misunderstanding you, Dr. Nguyen, but if the rates.
No, you're understanding. I'm saying, come on now, let's be for real. If, if, if instruction has not hit the mark, then maybe we need to come back a little earlier. Maybe even that is a return date for staff to get some training on some new program, you know, what, I mean, you haven't even told us anything about, oh, I can't even remember the new program. But, you know, if, if we want, if everything is perfect, we want staff hit the ground running. So if that means come a couple days early after, you know, spring break, everyone should be willing to do this.
I would, I would have to refer to Dr. Covington, Mr. Covington, to see about pay. If we would ask them to come in, we'd have to adjust the calendar again if we would do that, or we'd have to pay our folks past their 186 days contract. So that's, it's an option.
We're not asking anybody to work more than what they already contract for. Contract is contract, but that's okay. You know what?
We vote.
I think that's fair to keep in mind, though, just to, to keep an eye on, you know, future, what's going, going on down the pipe. But I think, I think it's things to continue to consider. So thanks for bringing that up, I think. So there's a motion. There's been some great discussion, y'all. I appreciate the thought. Really good discussion questions that we all keep in mind. But motion on the floor. It's been seconded, and I will ask Ms. Smith to call it up, please.
I'm sorry, I need a reminder of the motion.
Hey.
To adopt option A.
Option A, thank you. Okay. So I think I'm first.
Matthew, will you?
Yes, to call your name.
I, I, I didn't know what was going on right now.
Hold on, just a second. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries. I will vote yes. That's the way I was leaning towards anyway. I would like to have more information, but that's the way I'm leaning, and it seems like the rest of the board's leaning that way, too. So I'll just go ahead and say yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen? Dr. Nguyen, yes. Dr. Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel and Mr. Anderson and staff for that information. I know you've got some more for us right now.
A little bit more. So, yes. Thought you were done with me. You're not. For that, but we'll, we'll keep moving.
Randy or Matt, when do you want that feedback back before our next meeting? Or is he presenting at our next meeting, or January, or when do we want him to answer all the questions or concerns we had this meeting?
Board, I would, I would ask board members, and Dr. Miguel, I can watch the meeting with you, and we can jot down the, the questions that were asked. But board members, if you have additional questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas, please send those to me and, and Ms. Page, and then we can get that with Dr. Miguel maybe by week's end. That way, we can work through it with staff to get something together, whether it's by the 15th or sooner. Obviously, things will continue to come up, so I'm not saying you can't ask questions after Friday, but if you could send us questions or thoughts by this Friday, and then we can start working through some of that and look into it.
One more question, Randy or staff. We had a community comment concerning the updating of our website. Would we be able to get kind of an update on the website and kind of an outline of the planned updates or coordination for that to keep our parents aware? Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Dr. Miguel said she was going to follow up on, on that, on those different points. So we will absolutely make sure we get that done. Thank you.
I'm going to move us forward. Sorry. So another recommendation would be to assist with the issue that we're having with our classified staff and their absenteeism. So I'm going to have Lenora Miller discuss the next recommendation.
Thank you, Matt. So now that we know what the board's light is on our next step forward, regardless of whether you chose A or B for students and instructional staff, we'd like to recommend a rotational model for some of our classified operation employee groups to include custodians, shop trades, transportation, and nutritional services operations staff. And we'd like to begin this in mid-December. And these employees would be in a rotation as a cohorted staff-type model, well, where they will be working in person and potentially working remote in various roles, depending on their position and their location. We're hoping that due to being part of our, a high part of our community, community and being impacted by this high wave, that this might help kind of cut those numbers back down for not only our community, but our, just our staff in our buildings. So our operations team would like to move forward with that if the board would approve and support that. So our operations team would like to move forward with that if the board would approve and support that.
Lenora, um, I have a quick question. When you say cohort, cohorted staff model, um, does that mean that, uh, you're going to limit the number of people who have contact with each other so that there's no cross-contact? Is that what I'm hearing?
You are correct. It would be similar to a cohort A group of employees in our, involving all four of my departments. And then group B would be the other half. So the cohort would be similar to the hybrid model of the students that we had introduced earlier on.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation brought forward by Lenora Miller concerning option A and B um, for those outlined in the presentation.
Second.
Motion second. Uh, any questions, discussion from the, from the board? Not, Ms. Smith, go ahead with the roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen? Thank you. Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And that was a yes from Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you, board.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate that.
We have a few more, uh, things the board would like. I know it, it's a long one tonight. I do apologize. Um, but the conversation's been really powerful, so just.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that.
I'm going to let, uh, Lenora briefly talk about the, what she discussed earlier about the consolidation of some of our meal sites.
So I'd like to first thank Ms. Clark for her comment of, don't tell me what you can't do. Tell me what you can do and what support is out there. So this slide would reflect that on a positive note for you. So we'd like to begin on 12/7, which is next Monday. We'll be communication tomorrow immediately. We've already got some, uh, some communication built up for our families and our staff that we're going to consolidate the low participation meal sites and hopefully look at more delivery options. So we're going to start reviewing that potential, uh, to continue increased opportunities. So our, I wanted to share our reason, our, our criteria. For instance, you see Silver City on the map, low particip rate, low participation rates. They're so near proximity of Harmon. We felt like we could close that site, uh, and not negatively impact our families. And then they can access their meals at Harmon. So we did some, what is in within a mile to two mile, close proximity, uh, distance that won't impact what we're serving curbside. And then also what meal sites are not really reaching enough families. So this is, this communication will go out to our families. I just wanted to give you an indication of what we can continue to do. This will not impact meal deliveries. Uh, and the only thing that will impact meal deliveries is when we go back to hybrid or in-person, then meal delivery will cease. I wanted to add that to a bit of information.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm at Silver City and I can't get to Harmon in Rosedale, will they deliver my meal?
We can consider families that are having hardships. Silver City is really kind of a right around the block kind of throw.
But what if you have little babies?
Yeah.
You, you know, that's all I'm saying. We got some situation where they got little kids and they got babies.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Trying to walk to Harmon.
Yeah. Well, in our communication to our families, they're, they're going to be instructed. But if they have a hardship trying to get to our meal sites, please reach out to your principal. Please, please reach out to the social worker. We'll see what we can do with the resources that we have available with our staff. And that remote staff that I referred to, we will utilize them in every fashion that we can because meal participation is a high priority for us.
Okay, right. This is Dr. Nguyen. How many more days do you, that in December, will you serve food?
Uh, you, uh, well, we do it three times a week. And we give out, uh, four meals a day to each student. So I'm sorry, I can look at the calendar right quick.
Well, I'm looking at the calendar. So I'm saying you only really have at the most three more weeks in December?
You are correct from what I look at too.
So I guess my question is you can't make it through December and then start something new in January?
Not with the high positivity absences that we're having. That's the critical turning point that we've experienced. I've touched every resource on the operational side. And I'll be frankly honest with you, a lot of people don't want to go to the meal sites to serve meals. And it's a very sad fact that our patrons are not wearing masks. So we've had to come up with some critical, um, points to help protect our employees. If they don't have a mask on, ask, ask them to open their trunk, put the meal in there. Um, we did, uh, get some signage up that please wear a mask when you're picking up your meals. And you know, it's, it's a struggle. Nobody's enforcing it. So it's, it's a tough one, but we're doing the best we can.
Well, no, I have a question. This is Dr. Jaeger. Um, I know you said that meal pickup is extenuating circumstances, but I feel like if we close locations, that's an extenuating circumstance.
So, yeah, I agree. At, at one location, we're serving three meals.
Yeah, so in that instance, if they called and said, hey, we can't make it, wouldn't we go ahead and deliver to the, to that?
We will consider their request, yes. But they have to identify themselves to us. And they can do that through their school principal, um, or you know, the school social worker.
And that actually worked really well because, um, principals and social workers are going to be the first ones to hear if a family has, um.
So here's my concern. If, since they're in community locations and they don't have a school, they don't have a principal, then we've just blocked that meal. So what I'm thinking that, and it's not me thinking, it seems that, um, a number of us at the board are concerned. You know, are, are they not able just to call the phone number and, and give the, that, hey, you closed TA Edison and now I can't eat?
Yeah, you've got a very valid point. And there is a, a number that they can call if they don't, if they're not actually a student of our, our District 500. And that is our nutritional services, uh, meal website, uh, 627-3900. We would be happy to take their calls and vet through those issues. I do want to say that they are, there's about 20 other supporting agencies in Wyandotte County that are providing, um, produce boxes, meals, um, actually, uh, support financially, uh, maybe for, you know, emotional support. So we do have additional support out there in the community. We don't want to turn away anybody. We want to do, and this could change once the, once the COVID rates change. We could come right back to this and add these meal sites. This is just a temporary ask, just to get through this hurdle, um, that we're experiencing now for coverage.
And I, I, this is Yolanda, Ms. Miller. I hear you, but I also hear we will, we will try, we will attempt. Uh, and so how comforting is that to our kids and to our communities to say, we're going to close these? We're going to make sure you, we're going to try to make sure you eat. We're going to try to make sure you get these meals.
I agree. But let me tell you the seriousness of it was that we were at closure level from the health department at three locations due to the positivity rates of the COVID in our employees. We managed through that, through the contact tracing, through the isolation, through the quarantine. And we've made this work successfully up until this point. Now it's getting to the point that we have to recognize the fact that it's not getting any better. And I don't know that we can support every meal site at this point in time.
I think my concern is just like, for instance, Quandero. From Quandero to New Chelsea is a very far walk. You know, or they can go to Carl Bruce, they can go to that side.
Yeah, they could go.
It's just a concern about the number of them that will close. Um, because we're not sure which is served at each site. And I think if, uh, if, if there's a way to kind of, um, guarantee that those families who were served there would definitely be fed, would possibly ease our concerns.
Yeah. Well, they do have to do pre-order on their meals. And so we can vet through that with our families, um, and look for potential solutions. And if there is just a really high need at one of these sites, like maybe it is Quandero. Um, you know, we can reverse this, um, you know, and just continue to, to risk mitigate the best we can. This is not rock solid. This was just a kind of a starting point.
And what, and what were those three sites that almost shut down? Are you able to share those?
I can. It was the operational sites.
Okay.
Lenora, I have a question for you. Do you, do you know how many meals they serve at Harmon?
I do.
How many?
Harmon, let me go here. I had that backup on my laptop because I knew somebody would ask. Okay. So at Harmon, we are currently serving 233 students. And so we are distributing 466 meals to those 233 students. And we're also serving 66 students with 132 meal deliveries.
Is, is there any reason you picked Harmon instead of Argentine?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Um, you know, I thought about that hill, the structure and the dynamics of the hill. And that's a tough walk.
Well, most people aren't going to go up the hill. That's the reason I'm asking because it, and I don't know your logistics. I'm just looking at it from a neighborhood perspective. If you served it out of Argentine, you would hit almost all the Emerson kids, the Silver City kids, because you're right there by Chalet Manor, the Silver City apartments. You would get the kids from my neighborhood. You would possibly get some of the new Stanley kids.
Yeah, I understand totally. And I think the dynamics of where the kitchen is, is not kind of a good, uh, location to, uh, serve meals from curbside pickup. And the, so it's not can really conducive to us compared to Harmon for traffic control, where the nutritional kitchen is located dynamically on the lot. And we don't want parents coming into the schools through the front office. So we may not have an access door for them. All of those, all of that criteria was vetted through a lot of brains in our nutritional services department.
Okay, so you're not serving it in the parking lot anymore like you were last year?
No, we have, we have not been in tents for a while now. When we increased our meal sites, we were able to come out of the tents and then start separating our employee groups into regular, uh, um, outside schools instead of depending on one location of producing meals, which was at Central Kitchen.
Right.
And we were only going to six locations. And then what we learned was, oh my goodness, we've had an outbreak at school A. We've got to shut that site down. Oh my goodness, it impacted Central Kitchen. Oh my goodness, we can't serve the other meals because we're, we, what we were doing, we thought was the best model because we were learning our stumbling blocks along the way. And so once we started getting them off of each other, dependent from each other, we had more success and more safety with our employee groups and potential, um, non-shutdown. Now we're attacked with the higher positivity rate, which is impacting our plan, um, temporarily.
Yeah, because if you were serving from the trucks, you could do it across the street at that playground lot across from Argentine. And you can have cars going in one entrance and out the other. But, but, uh, yeah, because you could, you could serve so many more meals from Argentine than you can from Harmon just because the kids can't get to Harmon.
Yeah, I just think the dynamics of traffic is an issue. Um, we'll certainly take this, take your suggestion back to the team and make sure we vet it through everything.
Yeah, just, yeah, I don't know all your guys' constrictions and stuff, but I just look at all the kids that could walk to Argentine and the, the amount of kids you could serve.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think Harmon is our highest meal participation site. Just so you know, as a fun fact.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation based upon our community COVID rate and with Lenora and her staff committing to working with families to ensure people are still getting fed. Um, so again, that's my motion to support the recommendation. And if we need follow-up on our next meeting, um, then so be it from the board.
I second.
It's been seconded. Any other questions or thoughts? Not Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
I, I don't think I can support this because I believe two weeks seem like we could, we could stick it out to, to allow these parents to get to release this semester. So I'm going to reluctantly have to vote no.
Dr. Nguyen? No, excuse me, Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Randy, to follow up, can we ensure that there's clear communications to those sites? Because I know I think tomorrow's delivery day, um, about the resources available. And then I don't know if there has to be a verbal report, but possibly a written report, um, of those served that, uh, to ensure that they didn't fall off or just a follow-up report to reassure the board.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. Dr. Miguel, would you please help us to make sure we get the communications out to the folks? And then just have an, an updated report? That would be helpful. Thank you.
And we'll make sure that the families affected get, get, uh, a call.
Right. I mean, make sure that the, the call-in number is not embedded deeply in some website or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. And board members, I would, I would ask if you do receive emails or calls from anybody in the community saying, hey, I'm not getting meals, please make sure you, um, refer them to, I would send them to Doc. Sorry, Dr. Miguel, I'm going to fill your inbox, but just make sure. Make sure we tell our staff, we want to, we want to make sure anyone, that everyone who needs a meal is getting.
And President Lopez, this is Lenora again. I will share with the community, the other 20 agencies, if they're not aware, if that is a better option for them based on their residential address or wherever they are in our school district. Our goal is not for them to fail and not be with meals. So even if we have to utilize our other agencies, uh, we need to communicate that better to our families as well.
And that is something that in, in having all these conversations, we also learned, because we were very concerned about the numbers, um, that we are not feeding. And then when we started talking with the different agencies, one thing we learned is we are not feeding them, but some other agency is feeding them and, and getting that reimbursement, which, you know, as long as the kids get their meals, we are okay. So, um, I love that idea, Lenora, of when we communicate this, we don't just communicate our sites, but these are other community sites where you can also get a meal.
And Dr. Miguel and, and Ms. Miller as well, the, the optics, no one will understand that, how it sifted out. But the optics is that, oh, here is at Christmas, you're shutting nutritional sites down. And we know that's not the case, but those are the optics. So we have to work really hard. And, and whether or not there are other agencies, if these are District 500 students, that's our responsibility. There could be 50 other agencies, but they're our responsibility.
I agree.
Thank you.
Board, I really do appreciate your time. I know that there are more slides presented. What I would ask is if, if the board would like, we can continue to move forward with this update. You do have this PowerPoint. Um, there were some slides in that front that were added, uh, for this meeting specifically since the update you were given. So I've sent Leslie the updated, um, PowerPoint, uh, so she can share it with you again. Um, if you want to keep moving with the board meeting for time's sake. That's up to you and I can do whatever you would like.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, I just have a question. And I've asked you, Dr. Miguel, this question 100 times. Are we, are we not? Are we, are we not taking temperatures? Upon entry of, I'm, I'm not on mute, upon entry of, of our facilities?
We do have the temperature check devices. Um, and and we do use them in central office. That's what I can tell you. Um, I think um although I'm saying this, we do use them in central office, I don't think there is a way to check that every person that comes in actually stands in front of that um, of that um device. Um, but Doug, if you are in, in the call, or Lenora, if you have more information, maybe you can add.
I mean, I know it is only for that minute, not that day, but that minute. But anytime you go to a hospital who, who has a gazillion illnesses, someone is still taking a temperature. So for us to discard it as saying it's not a good indicator is suspect. So I, I'm not, I don't need a whole conversation. I just asked that and that's just a comment.
I will verify, can, I'm sorry. Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt you. Uh, Doug Clements, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'll just share that I've been in a number of our sites over the last several days. And uh there is the temperature scanning devices at the front and some, some of the schools are uh much more um forceful, I'll even say, and making sure that, you know, you, you sign the book and you scan your temperature. Uh, in every case, they're there and and are being used.
Well, Doug, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. I was at the school board yesterday and nothing, I never saw the temperature thing. I came in. I didn't see a temperature. Nobody took my temperature. I walked in, I got the paper I was supposed to sign, and that was it.
That was there at the central office?
Yeah, it, when I walked in the central office on the main floor, there wasn't a gate there.
Well, we'll check on that, because uh they've got at least two in that building that I know of. That door.
Floor. But that main entrance, I'm telling you, I walked in. Nobody, the, the one time I walked in, I didn't have a badge. So I, I forgot it. I had to fill out the form. Did I do this and do, but nobody ever took my temperature until I got to the second floor.
Okay.
And I do know at a few, a couple of schools, it's not working real good.
You know, and there, there, I have had some uh uh feedback about that as well. And I tried to forward that on to uh Wayne and the TIS group so they can contact their vendor and uh see what we can do about that. And I was at Washington one day and that temperature, they uh said I had a hundred and thirteen degree fever and I know that was not the fact. So I, I know there are occasionally issues.
But I'm just saying at the main entrance. Nobody takes the temperature.
They made the main entrance on the uh, on the, the second floor on the west side there. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll look into that.
We'll look into that.
Thank you. Dr. Miguel, um, I, I, I'm wondering, um, Mr. Anderson, thank you for um, for offering, just for the sake of time and for um, uh, Dr. Miguel, do you think it would be okay to postpone some of the other slides that were on the um, presentation? Or are there things that are, that you need from us regarding the other things on there that we need, that you need a decision from us or that?
And actually, the, the upcoming um slides are, are kind of a reminder of what we are doing with special ed and some of the dates. Now, now we have um dates on when everything is starting. We also have the update on um ESL students. Um, and the athletics update, which um just shares with you some more of the information that I have shared with the board based on the CAESIA um, last meeting. So one thing you could do is just read it and and let me know what questions you have. But it's kind of just a, a little bit more detailed information on what you already know.
So I would suggest, just because I know board members have had some um emails regarding sped. Uh, maybe if we could at least just give that part of the, the slide, so we're updated, so everyone has the same information of the dates that are coming forward and, and what's expected. Uh, we could at least do that section of the presentation and postpone the rest um to, to the December fifteenth meeting. If you're, if you all are okay with that.
Yes, thank you. Um, and so on Monday, we will bring in our first uh students for cells three. Our autism program steps, early childhood special education, and our deaf with hard of hearing students. Um, this week, our teachers and um staff were involved with training and a meeting with principals and a coordinator. Elizabeth Morris had a health orientation um for uh two-day options, A and PM, for, for the staff to come in and learn about PPE and learn about the expectations and what to do if something occurs. And so tomorrow, the teachers will be in the building, preparing for their classroom um for to receive our first set of students, December seventh, which is Monday. We currently have about seventy-three students that parents have elected to send. We don't know if they all will show up day one, but I can tell you, our nutritional services have been in communications and collaboration with me. They're going to be offering the grab and go meals at the end of the three-hour session in the AM and at the end of the three-hour session in the PM. Mr. Miguel in transportation, his team has been involved and have routes and he's gonna have final route information for me tomorrow. So everybody has really worked in collaboration. These are our students with our greatest needs. Um, every district in our region has had these students back in school. And um I am just grateful that we can at least now be able to bring them in and offer services. Parents have that right to decide if they want to take advantage of those services or not. But we owe them the opportunity to offer these services to them. And so I'm really pleased with that. I know there's been some email concerns and the staff are concerned. That's, that's reality. They are like, hey, I'm coming back and you know, they're, they're anxious, parents are anxious, I'm, I'm getting emails. And what I've asked of my leadership team today is to communicate with their building principals. But we need to be, you know, somewhat visible to just kind of offer some support for our teachers. Because this is, this is gonna feel different. They haven't been in this environment in months. Um, so I have intentions to, to spend just a little bit of time in the building every day. So I'm not making sure I'm not cross-contaminating and all that stuff. But it's important that I am visible as the leader of this department to say, hey, I know this is tough. I know your anxieties are high, but I am here to support you. You have some people, and we have some folks that are volunteering to go in and just give a little bit of time to try to support teachers and parents. Um, and I'm sure stuff is still to be turned into HR for accommodations. You saw that that number was high for, for sped. And HR department will continue to process those and we will respond accordingly. Uh, but we are moving forward with bringing our students with our greatest needs back. And um we're gonna collect data for weeks and then our next date to bring in our second phase won't be until January eleventh. We will give teachers a week before that to still go through any training, to prepare their rooms um and things of that sort. But we are moving forward and I'm, I'm so happy to be able to share that this has actually happened. I know Ms., Ms. Wanda Page mentioned, you know, we've talked about it for months, even prior to my arrival. But we are here, we have dates, and we're gonna do the best we can to serve these group of students.
Thank you, Dr. Laurie. I appreciate your leadership and guidance in, in moving us forward in this with Dr. Miguel and the rest of the staff. Um, board, if you have questions, I um, you know, please sub- submit them via email. Um, if you have a couple of questions now, otherwise we, we will continue on with the meeting. But thank you, Dr. Laurie, Dr. Miguel, for giving us, and Mr. Anderson, for giving us all that information tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. And we will, board, you have the presentation. Please make sure you review the other slides that were not presented tonight. We will pick those up at our December fifteenth meeting um and other information as it's presented. So thank you. All right, at this time, I would take a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Thanks, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now take a motion to approve our bills.
I'll move. Second.
Moving seconded, Ms. Smith.
Uh, could I ask a question, please? Discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Nguyen.
I just had one. The very first entry is National School Board Association registration out of district travel, hundred and fifty dollars. What is that?
Anyone has?
Yeah, this is Wayne Correll. Um, so that was uh Janie Humphries, I guess, canceled. Um, hands, hold on, I'm trying to pull up the bill. It was for a NSBA twenty twenty Chicago Conference for public education leaders. And there was a cancellation fee for uh Janie.
There shouldn't have been.
We all were canceled.
Yeah, we all canceled.
And there was, there was no other charge but for you. And I have to figure out who uh entered that and I'll, I'll check on it and report back to you.
They weren't supposed to charge us, any of us.
Yeah. Susan was still.
Well, I'll have to find out the reason from the vendor.
Get your money back. Excuse me, get our money back.
Was traveling this week. I was like, go, Janie.
Janie doesn't go anywhere.
Tell us, Janie. Thank you.
Do we need to pull that um until we get a response before we?
But we'll hold the check.
Thank you. So um, any other questions, discussion? Okay, um, so we will, um, there's a motion to approve pending confirmation of that particular line item um from Wayne. Thank you, Wayne, for looking into that. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for that question. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, great, so now I would entertain a motion to recess and to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of the parties involved under coma. Um, going in at nine eleven and for, start with fifteen minutes.
I have a question. Is it possible to, to adjourn the meeting so that the people can go home instead of wait for us to come back?
No.
Okay, just offer.
But I think I can, I, I think it would be okay for me to say staff can go. Is that legal? No?
Yeah, the meeting, you have to come back to close the meeting out in open session, but you.
Yeah, but we can do that and staff could go and no one will take offense on that.
Right, you just have to come back to an open meeting to close out the meeting.
We will, but the staff can go. Great. Thank you.
Good night, staff. Thank you. At nine twelve for fifteen minutes, coming out at nine twenty-seven. Can you get a motion?
Oh, so moved. Second.
Moving seconded, Ms. Smith. Thank you, staff. Have a good night.
Get some rest.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved. Randy, you're on mute.
Moved and seconded. Thank you to come back into open session. Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Maxine.
All right, I appreciate it. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page? Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Randy's a yes. I don't know if I said yes or not. All right, so we're back in open session. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.